I now call the March 6, 2023 Vance County Board of Commissioners to order. First on our agenda, we will have the invocation by Reverend Ron Carver from First Baptist Church.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you all for having us. Let's pray. Eternal and almighty, majestic and awe inspiring, good gracious and loving God, we don't need to invoke your presence. You are with us. We're not always with you. And so in these moments and in this meeting, may those who place their faith in you draw near to your heart and seek your mind. We'd be remiss to not thank you for just another day of life and such a lovely one as this. We're grateful for all the kindness that you've shown us. We're thankful for our county and for our leaders, for the organizations and the businesses and the churches and schools, the public servants that make it a great place to live. We ask that you'll continue to bless each of them with good health and guidance. And give us the resources to do our best for all. Help our leaders to conduct the business of our county with respect and with integrity and with wisdom. And always with an eye towards fairness. And to not forget that there are those who are hopeless and helpless, who always just need a little more. Help us, oh Lord, to be brave to abandon our own ambitions and our own glory, seeking for a greater glory and for a greater good. Help us not be afraid to dare great things, to have courage to face naysayers and critics when we've been fair. And in all things, to have humility and show our sense of civic responsibility. We offer you our prayer tonight, asking for you to hear and for you to answer in your most holy and great name. Amen.
Amen.
Next, we'll have our county manager, Jordan McMillan, to introduce our assistant county manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, I know you all have met Chris Dillon, but just wanted to point him out publicly for everybody and put him in the limelight for a second or two, because I know he would enjoy that. But Chris Dillon is the new assistant county manager. Chris, if you'll just stand up and be recognized. Chris comes to us, he's been with Wake County as a number of roles, but was a senior assistant manager there prior. Has worked at the Wildlife Resources Commission a number of years before that and was in the office of the President Pro Tem and Senate for a good number of years prior to that. So really good experienced individual, been able to put him right to work just in the last couple of weeks that he's been here. He puts together a fairly detailed and very good lengthy legislative update each week. But he has been involved in solid waste, scrap tires, white goods already. He's been involved in our budgeting process. Already handled a number of citizen issues that have come up. And as far as departments, he is, has a very similar group of departments that he had while he was in Wake County. He is going to serve as our liaison to the Elections Department and also to Soil and Water. And will be overseeing economic development, solid waste, EMS and Veterans Affairs to begin with. And so just wanted you all to be aware of kind of that portfolio that he would be overseeing as he's here with us. So glad to have you on board, Chris, and a part of the team. So, thank you.
Would you like to say a few words, Chris? All right. I don't want to put you on the spot. Next, we're going to have public comments. First, we'll have comments from Joseph Brody. Is he present? And just please keep in mind that the public comments is limited to five minutes.
How's everybody tonight? My name's Joseph Brody. I'm the president and founder of a nonprofit organization called Carolina United for Change. But that is really not what I'm here for tonight. I've come here tonight to proposition to the board to get the road paved in the Keys Estates in Williamsburg. I have been living out there for 23 years. I'm one of the few homeowners that's left out there. Most of those properties have been sold to individual real estate companies who has taken them over. And there's a few of us left, but I weathered the storm, as they say, because those roads have been hectic to automobiles that I have purchased and others have purchased because of the holes that's in there. At one point, it was so bad that the the school buses couldn't come in and drop off their loads. At another point, the mailman wouldn't come in into those roads. And so, and all the people out there are taxpayers, I mean Vance County. And like I said, I've been in, when I got out the army in 1983, I moved down there and purchased one of those homes from Dynasty's Homes and Mr. Gupton. And like I said, I've seen a lot of people come and go. A lot of people were flimflam down there in Williamsburg. So that's my purpose for being here tonight to see what we need to do to start the process of getting those roads paved. And I'd like, thank you for listening.
All right, thank you.
The next young man could tell you more about it because he's the, he's responsible for the the Keys Estates Homeowners Association that we started. And that was a big part of it, starting that when, when it first came up. We needed that so that it wouldn't be sold out to another individual. So he can tell you more about it.
They're private roads.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Answer to your question. Yes, sir. It is a private road.
I need to identify you.
I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay. We have written down Thomas Yates. Is that you?
That is correct.
Okay. And again, you're limited to five minutes and you will also be addressing the paved roads. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right.
Yes. And thank you again, Vance County Board, for having me to speak here. I'm in charge of Kia State Road Maintenance, which we created on our own in order to keep the roads upgraded at least two times a year, which involves motor graders, dump trucks, and it's got to be done at least two or three times a year just for the public service to enter in, such as school buses for our kids, also for EMS, postal services and other public services. So the roads, a lot of these homes I purchased in 99, a lot of these private roads in Vance County or in rural areas that don't get any attention. So the word private road means that it's never going to be kept up. And another thing that we noticed here is that subdivisions, it's not assured that the regulations of Vance County are even being upheld when it comes to us private roads at all. I talked to highways, the DOT, and I hear a lot of them say, well, it's private. We can't help you. But we're constantly being taxed. We pay taxes. But we see these DOT go down the street and repair other subdivisions, but they won't repair this one. So I do collect money from landlords. So it's a lot of them probably in here to own properties out there. So I do collect. Those who don't collect, I put a lien against the property. That's the only way that we can get our funds to upkeep these roads. So it's more like a scare tactic to get them to pay. So we would like to address this so we can get this attended. It's been over 11 years since Gupton been incarcerated. Now I think he's deceased. Those roads were promised to be paved in the time of purchase of those homeowners, which I am one, but they're running them out to the, the more you de, ruin the area, the homeowners leave out. And then you got renters, locals around here buying them out for 20 bucks, $20,000. Cost that owner a hundred grand. So this is what we're up against. So we'd like to bring some more attention to it and see if we can get a response from it. I'd like to thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, Mr. Brody, go ahead.
How many homes are in there?
Eighty.
Eighty?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Yates, how far, how far is that? From the road to the end of this? How many miles? Is that a mile or two?
It's less than a mile.
Less than a mile? You all are really doing a great job and keeping it up. I have addressed, we had several owners call me concerning that issue. And we have discussed, and I think even one time I spoke with the county manager, that it is an issue. And hopefully we can get back to looking into, see what we really can do. Because I agree, I agree with you all 100%. It's been a long time.
It has.
And I know it's a private, you know, like I said, the first thing we cry, it's a private road. But you know, with all things are possible. So, but I just would like for us to somehow investigate to see what can be done of anything to make sure, because like I said, you have buses. I know that they allow the buses to go to a certain amount to pick up those, those children. Because it is dangerous to come to that road. And I think they go, I think they go farther down now than they used to. But there's a lot of kids there.
Yeah, because one time it was just like the second drive, because I remember when I was.
Yeah, it's a total of 80 homes. Even when homes are foreclosed or whatever, there is no signs put up. Those houses are just sold pretty much under the table. Someone else is in there. So I have to go through the trouble of finding out who owns it by going to the clerk officer every year, getting new listings. And this is how we go after, but a lot of them are not individual, they're businesses. So we have to have a lawyer or firm to kind of uphold what we can force these liens. So some of them are renting, are collecting rent in these subdivisions, but have no intentions of paving the roads in these subdivisions. So it's a one-way street for them, money being made, but nothing else.
When there's a private, when there's a private road, what's the procedure for the county to take over? There's a process, doesn't it?
We ran into the same issue with county water. If you remember, we had plans to bring water into Kia Estates. Problem was, we had to get easements from every single one of the property owners as you go along in order to even put water in there. So that same issue is an issue as it relates to the roads as well. But yeah, the county doesn't own any roads, you know, it's either city roads, city streets, DOT roads or private. This was a subdivision that was built prior to the county subdivision regulations. This guy right here has a really, really hard job. And I know a couple of years ago, coming out of the winter, the roads were in really bad shape. And this was the guy that made it happen out there. But really and truly, it's the homeowners that live in that neighborhood who are responsible for that private road. Jonathan can maybe speak to what legal avenues are out there, but it's not a sure thing in terms of.
Could I add before you speak? Could you kind of, the Vance County Board, Planning Board, kind of elaborate on the definitions of subdivisions and the roads?
What's that now?
The definition of the subdivisions and the roads? Because I know that's in the provision.
Yeah. So, so the thing is, this subdivision was built prior to our subdivision ordinance.
Was that under old law?
No, there wasn't any local at the time. And so it's not under any of those laws, which is a part of the reason that it is the way that it is out there.
So moving forward, because trying to keep this up with the inflation, it's almost impossible. And what's going to end up happening, this is going to become a, no longer a subdivision, it's going to become a trailer park ran down. All the original homeowners are going to be forced out. And then you're going to have landlords that I deal with on a yearly basis just to collect.
No, we understand that. And I talked with Mr. Brody too on this, I think in the last week or so. But the, our legal options are very limited. We don't, we don't own that road. We have no responsibility over it. That doesn't mean it's not in bad shape and we need to look for solutions. But I think when we looked at this 10 or 15 years ago, I mean, there was some sort of petition. You need to have 75% of the owners out there agree to an assessment in the future if we were to go in there and do anything. And so there is a small little process, but it's a challenge.
And that offer that you were speaking of, I remember I spoke with one of the commissioners as well about taxation that we want to bring in the water sewer. But it was a choice from the, each homeowner. It was an option. And so, and explaining that to me at that time, they said it was an option for each homeowner. But in order for them to even take it over and do any maintenance to these roads, it would have to be everyone signing. And I knew it wasn't going to be, but it also created more taxation, water sewer, which everyone has wailed. So this is where the dilemma was. Are we forced to close these wells just to get our roads paved and go with public water? Or how do we, that was the reason for the denial of those signing in.
Yeah, yeah, we had a couple of signups in Kia Estates, if I remember, not, not a lot. But I think really what caused water not to go into Kia Estates was the fact that we would have had to get easements from every single property owner along the road in order to put water in. And that just wasn't, it wasn't possible at that time. So that, and ultimately, we weren't able to put water in.
I have gotten a proposal from several construction sites like ST Wooton and Carolina Rock to pave it.
Well, and that's a, I mean, I'm glad that there's a homeowners association that's established here. Let's just say, that's a good thing.
Thank you.
What we did, there was another subdivision, very similar situation. DOT was able to come out, do an assessment of the road and provide some guidance as to what you would have to do to bring it up to their standards. If you can bring it up to their standards, you can then work to try to petition it over and let DOT take it over. But yes, so that's an option as well.
Got you.
So you're saying that they was, they gave you a proposition, what they could do with, is what you're saying? If you were certain?
Yeah, I mean, I dial 811 when I deal ditches to find out what underground wires are. I have to hire contractors to come open up the drainage for the flow. So we have to know what these wires are. So I contacted ST Wooton, one of the road departments in Carolina Rock, and got a price on it.
Okay, so did they give you a figure of what it take, what, so what it would take for them to do it? Do you have a figure?
Not with me tonight, Mrs. Fines, but it was over, it was close to a half a million dollars. 300,000 or a quarter of a million.
Troy, let me ask you a quick question. If this subdivision were under our current rules, you said this subdivision was built before we put in place the policies that we have now. If they were built under the current rules, what would we do?
We would be able to enforce, well, number one, you would typically require a road maintenance agreement when it's developed. And then you would be able to enforce upon that road maintenance agreement. But in this case, again, none of that comes into play.
So though it's private road, wasn't even considered when you all put the policy in place for?
Well, this was prior to that law going in place.
Yeah, this was, this was before Vance County regulated any subdivisions or had any subdivision regulations. And there were, there were several home sites and developments that were recorded in 98, 99 in anticipation of this coming in. And that's one of the major ones. Our current regulations require the development of these roads to such that once the minimum number of houses per distance are sold and occupied, they will be able to be taken over by DOT. Sometimes the timeframe between the development and the taking over of DOT is such that you've got to do some repair remedial work, whether it be in the ditches or something to where a construction vehicle messed up the high, the blacktop. But most of the time, it's an incentive to these developers to get them taken over by DOT because that takes the maintenance and upkeep off of them. And we require our subdivision regulations, once it gets to a major subdivision, as this would have been, require the roads to be built according to DOT specs and standards.
I'm going to keep, I'm going to look into a little further, Mr. Yates.
Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Heston, did you have a question?
No, I'm fine. Thank you, though.
Okay, next on our agenda is, we'll have Frankie Nobles with the Employee Engagement Team.
Good evening, everyone. So we've got something a little different this month. This is going to be our employee of the year. And the employee of the year come from the employees of the month till the end of 2022. The employees were rated on a scale one to five. They were, all their names were put in the matrix. And we rated them on a scale one to five. And just like the employees of the month, they were, they were rated on teamwork, initiative, attendance, and who goes above and beyond. Our employee of the year that was selected is Carl James with the Maintenance Department. Carl was nominated for employee of the month in April of 2022. Carl was selected employee of the month May of 2022. Carl was a huge assist, assist to Vance County. Carl Staffman states, he's always willing to help anyone, always willing to give people advice. They didn't say, well, it was good advice or not. And always has a positive attitude. They also said that Carl believes on getting the job done right the first time. He strives in keeping our workplaces safe and free from hazards that could harm our staff or our citizens. They also stated he comes in early and stays late if needed. He does whatever it takes to get the job done. Everyone that deals with Carl on a daily basis says that Carl deserves this award because he is so willing to help whomever needs it. There are just, these are just some of the reasons why Carl deserves this award, our very first employee of the year award. On March the 16th, we will do some refreshments, do a downstairs in the atrium of the courthouse. We're going to have some cake and peanuts. So we'd like for all y'all to attend. It's from 12 to 2 on March the 16th. Just be ready to eat some cake. And we're going to recognize Carl again. I think it's a little bit too much for you, Carl. But we're going to give him a plaque as that acknowledgement. Most of all, we would like to thank our commissioners for the work and dedication to our staff and the citizens. Also for allowing us to recognize our wonderful staff here in all of our Vance County departments. Brad, you said you wanted to speak, right? Come on up if you want to say anything, you want to say anything?
I'd just like to say, I think when we were doing the renovation to the Eaton John's complex, he was there, you know, just working really hard and did a lot of stuff that really helped bring that into fruition and everything. So I too think that you're a dedicated employee.
Mr. Stansfield, would you like to come and give him?
Our brother will get a photo if we can. Congratulations, Carl.
Frankie, tell the lady taking the picture come down. She's too far away. Come closer.
I can't see George.
Next on our agenda is an appointment from the North Carolina Department of Transportation. Julie White, Jason Orthner and Ryan Blumfield will give us an update on the S-line rail corridor project.
Good evening. Julie White, I'm the Deputy Secretary at North Carolina DOT for Multimodal Transportation, which for tonight's purposes includes the Rail Division and the Integrated Mobility Division. And I hope you are excited to hear from two of the nation's leading experts in developing transit-oriented development and rail programs. We are so fortunate to have Jason Orthner and Ryan Brumfield on our team. They're going to give you an update on both the development of the rail corridor and on the transit-oriented development that we've been doing with the communities along the line. And we are here to answer any questions you have after. So Jason will come up first. He's our rail director. And when I brag on the team, I'll tell you, it's not just me that says they're the nation's leading experts. There is not a federal meeting we are at DC where the Federal Rail Administration does not call out Jason Northner from the front of the building. We have an exciting economic development announcement happening tomorrow in Lexington related to rail. And the FRA Administrator will be with us. And I have no doubt he will again reference Jason Northner having something to do with the announcement tomorrow. So he'll speak first, and then Ryan Brumfield will speak second, our Integrated Mobility Division Director. Thank you so much for having us. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. And thank you for having us, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm told I've actually got to open the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. I'll go through these slides as quickly as possible, but certainly trying to provide you as much information as we can. So a little bit of background, we're talking about a corridor that we've been working with the county and the city of Henderson for quite some time on. But we, by way of background, we have come through the pandemic with, coming outside of it, with significant ridership on our, on our current passenger rail services with really the highest ridership we've seen in our state in passenger rail in our 32-year history. We've actually beat 2019 past ridership levels by 13%. And we've exceeded those, the, both January and February records this year. So there's a significant opportunity here that we're seeing across the state as folks are leaning into passenger rail for their mobility and productivity needs. So it's a good story. It helps us to indicate that something like this project, which we're excited to bring into Vance County and as part of our strategic vision, will be a very successful project. This is North Carolina's current passenger rail service network. It's comprised of both Amtrak and our own branded NC by train routes that you can see here. It's focused on the core, the center of the state, with some connecting bus services to the eastern part of the state. Obviously, this is a basis, but it is not where we want to go with providing this level of, a level of service to our citizens in our state. As I mentioned, we're very successful. One of our trains or our train services have been very successful through the pandemic and coming out of the pandemic. So successful that we'll be adding another train between Raleigh and Charlotte this year. We're also working on station projects between Raleigh and Charlotte, including a new Charlotte Uptown Station, which will allow passengers to get right into the uptown of Charlotte, right next to the Panther Stadium for their boarding needs in a new multi-use and multi-story facility. We also have projects throughout the state ongoing right now. Projects as far west is looking at passenger rail extending to Asheville. Projects looking at extending passenger rail to Wilmington, and then lots of other places throughout the state for both expanded services and new services that would connect more communities to this to this new network. And FRA has a new program that is allowing the department and communities across the state to lean into some funding that is being provided through their through their programs to study and and develop new corridors throughout our state. And you can see this this map has a very extensive reach for the the corridors that we're looking at throughout the state. Again, as far west is Asheville, east Wilmington, Morehead City, and all up and down the center part of our state as well. But the key thing, the key component to making this whole system in our state successful is one very strategic quarter, and that is the quarter linking Raleigh to Richmond through Vance County. That is that is a key and one of the most strategic corridors because what it does is it provides high-frequency route, a high-frequency route that connects North Carolina to Virginia and the rest of the East Coast. We've been working on this project, which we call the S-line. It's currently the the quarter right outside here, right through downtown Henderson. We've been working on it for a long time. USDOT in 1992 first designated the quarter as one of seven sort of strategic higher-speed quarters throughout the nation. And the department immediately began work to look at, you know, what is the correct routing for this this new route that will connect really the entire East Coast. So we finished a Tier One document that selected the quarter, that quarter that comes right through Vance County. And in 2017, we finished the detailed environmental analysis with a Tier Two Record of Decision that basically, from the USDOT's perspective, from FRA's perspective, said, you've done the diligence, you've done the work to complete all of those efforts. And so now the quarter is cleared for significant funding, bless you, significant funding and the ability to move forward. So we submitted for additional grants at that time, winning $48 million in 2020 under the the FRA's Chrissy Program to actually acquire the quarter from CSX. And then subsequently, we received grants for Transit Oriented Development, which we've been working with communities, including Henderson, all up and down the corridor to see how rail and other transportation modes and and local development in these communities can can work together to develop the the corridor and be and and provide access to it. And then last year in 2022, we won two significant grants. One, to advance the preliminary engineering for the entire corridor from Raleigh to Richmond, and also a a grant for advancing mobility hubs, which is just a really nice way of saying a station with lots of connected components to it. And Ryan on our team will will go over that with you. But we continued to see success in the quarter. We continue to see the support of the USDOT in saying, yes, this is the place that we want to invest. And why and why invest? I mean, you know, one thing that we're seeing in the region significantly, and even Vance County is seeing this come its way, is significant growth in our state. Population density in both Virginia and North Carolina is growing. Just this quarter connects about 20 million people today, but that is that is expected to increase to 25 million, 25 million by 2040. And so what this quarter does is it better connects these these regions by providing a route that is has a lot better reliability. It's got resiliency. It has the ability to move goods and people in a faster, more efficient manner than just than just what is out there in infrastructure today. It's critical to expanding the vision of North Carolina's passenger rail system, as I went over before. And of course, it has the environmental benefits of rail and provides mobility and productivity and access to a wider population demographic. This is just a simple map showing, you know, what where that connection lies. We have high-frequency service today between Raleigh and Charlotte. This year, we'll go to five trains a day each way. Virginia has an equal level of service connecting the Hampton Roads area to Richmond and DC, but we really don't have any connect real connectivity between those two systems. This this project is what connects those two systems together and provides not just the citizens that are in those two regions, but everybody in between fast, frequent service over a new dedicated route. Did a lot of activities on the quarter underway. We we are working. We've been working diligently with CSX on a on a quarter acquisition. We anticipate that that to be very mature and advanced this year. We're working on service development, the details of schedule, train schedules, and and what trains go where and how. We're doing already beginning the surveying, the field surveying of the corridor to make sure that we've got the base mapping necessary to the detailed design. We've been working with communities all up and down the corridor, and we will continue to do that and are committed to do that. Ryan will go into some more detail on those efforts. And then we're working on the 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 details of engineering. 160, we have 162 miles of railroad design that we're working on, as well as 82 miles of roadway design to de-conflict the roadway system and the railroad system. And then we're developing and submitting grants into discretionary programs. The Bipartisan Infrastructure Law provides a lot of additional funding in rail, and we are looking to for North Carolina to really take take its competitive share of that with one of the most competitive projects in the nation. I am an engineer by background, and so I really do get into some of the engineering aspects. I'll be very brief on this slide, but we are looking at a very advanced quarter. We're developing one of the most advanced rail corridors in the country right here, connecting Wake County, Franklin County, Vance County, and to the north with speeds up to 110 miles an hour, building great separation. So you have you don't have conflicts between vehicles and trains using materials like concrete ties, high-speed switches, high-level platforms so you can board right onto the train and not step up to the train, and then advanced signal systems like positive train train control. And I will turn the mic over to Ryan Brumfield to go through some of the community initiatives we have.
Good evening. Wanted to talk to you for a couple of minutes about the Transit Oriented Development Study that we're doing as part of the S-line. We received a grant from the Federal Transit Administration in 2021. And this is really about looking at each community and how we maximize the value of transit service in the community to benefit the community, leveraging that rail service to improve access, mobility, and economic vitality in each community. So it's about understanding the possibilities and thinking about the planning the place around the rail service so that we can really benefit from the rail service. Think about how you can increase that access and connectivity for other modes of transportation, walking, biking, transit, and parking for vehicles, and making sure we're planning for those, all those modes to come together to maximize the benefits of rail in each community. So the study itself, deliverables will include corridor-wide conversations and plans around vision, financing, and transit operations in each community. Each community, including Henderson, will get a TOD implementation plan that includes community-specific playbooks with recommendations and guidance for land use plans and zoning, regulatory policies, and infrastructure investments. So the playbook really is a sort of a step-by-step guide on how you implement that vision for transit-oriented development in your community. Part of what has made the S-line project so successful are the strong partnerships we've had with the counties and municipalities along the corridor. Here are the funding partners specifically that provided funding for the TOD study. But we've, of course, had a broad range of additional stakeholders, including including you all and Henderson throughout the project. And we appreciate the support for this project. So following completion of the TOD study this spring, we will start feasibility studies, environmental analysis, and preliminary design of mobility hubs in each community, including right here in Henderson. The mobility hubs, as Jason mentioned, will include the rail platform and rail amenities, sort of the traditional rail station that you think of, but it will also bring together other modes of transportation, community services, businesses, and event space. So think of it more of as an activity center for the community that also happens to be where the rail rail station is and other modes of transportation come together. So we think that these mobility hubs, in conjunction with transit-oriented development considerations near the hubs, will ultimately result in vibrant communities maximizing the benefits of the rail service to realize community goals related to quality of life, access, and mobility and economic vitality. So real excited about this concept. The mobility hub concept is is sort of a just a new way of thinking about that rail station so that we are considerate of all the community needs when we're designing the station. You can see here the partners included in that project, including Henderson, and we'll be starting, like I said, this project in the spring to include that feasibility site assessment, NEPA, and preliminary engineering for for a mobility hub site here in Henderson. Jason?
Thank you, Ryan. I'll just spend just a just a very short period of time talking about next steps and kind of where we are today. The project is advancing, and we are we've already got four projects in down in Wake County that are funded to support the development of this project. They're great separations, and they're noted here. But we're not stopping there. We are. We have. We're right now submitting for a construction grant to start the initial construction segments that we're building from Raleigh North as that as that and developing service in those segments. So this shows you kind of the map of how the we're approaching the the development of this project. We are supporting or we are right now applying for that initial grant with the available funding under the infrastructure law with but we're really targeting the full development of the system in the 2030 to 2031 timeframe. That's our target, and it really is the only determination on whether or not we can get there or not is is how quickly the funding will flow to the project. But we are looking at developing it as quickly as possible to start making these rail connections, you know, through our communities. So preparing and submitting grant applications, continuing our strong coordination with our partners, including the communities, which are some of which are our most important partners, expediting our preliminary engineering program to go ahead and get work it towards construction documents, and then continuing to look for opportunities to accelerate the full delivery of the entire project from Raleigh to Richmond, and then and as we do that, expand rail services as we as we work north. Thank you very much for your time. I'm sure one.
Thank you very much. Does anyone, you know, anyone have any questions?
I got two questions. One, I think we're talking about fast trains here, fast track. So what is the anticipated travel time between St. Richmond and Raleigh when this is in?
That's a great question. So we're looking at around two, two hours to two hours and 15 minutes. And it may be faster than that, depending upon how many stops the trains make, but significantly faster than what than that travel time today, which is over, which is closer to three, three hours and 30 or three hours and 40 minutes.
And my second question is, what's your anticipated completion date for all of this? I want to know if I'm going to ride this train.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Well, like I said, it depends on funding. We we've struck. We have the entire project environmentally cleared, which that is the that is the major step in almost any transportation project is is getting through that process of environmental documentation. So at this point, it's just the speed at which we can apply for and receive discretionary grant funding that is that is targeted specifically for rail and and then deliver on that. Our target would we would like to have the full project delivered by 2030 to 2031.
2030?
That's right.
I won't be riding this train.
Yes, sir.
Looking at your slide, the the S-line update, Richmond-Raleigh, it it shows stations. Let's see, get back to there. It's it shows the stations designated by the little orange dot. And then but then it says communities along the S-line, and that was everything. Is that because there's we're in the planning stage of that? Or what stations do we anticipate along that route?
That's a very good question. So we are working. We're working to develop the final list of stations. This quarter is going to have lots of diff. We anticipate having lots of different services. So it'll have express services. It'll have local services. It may and it'll likely have commuter services. So the station development will likely, you know, follow what that with a service, with the type of service that's developed. Henderson is envisioned as meeting all of those needs and being a stop for all of those types of services.
Okay. With the speed you're anticipating with the trains, quite often, when you get to a certain speed on a passenger, it interferes with freight. Are you going to do that with dual rail? Or are you going to sidetrack for freight? How's that being developed?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. So one of the major considerations for our development of the design here, and we're doing it directly with, you know, coordination with CSX, is making sure that as we develop the quarter and raise the speed from nominally 25 mile an hour a day up to, you know, the the design speeds we're looking at, is is both building it, building a infrastructure that supports the speed and also has the capacity for not just the freight network today, but the freight network that that needs to expand. So that mean that does include places of dual rail, as you mentioned, or double track, or separating in places freight operations from passenger operations as needed, including around stations and things like that. So we're adding capacity so the two the two services work together real well.
So these systems would work together as far as doing a short rail and those type of things?
That. Well, that's correct. Yeah, freight and passenger would operate basically together. We'd schedule the trains to make sure that they both the freight trains have can conserve their customers and the passing trains can get over their route.
What do you anticipate the speed of the passenger train going through this area?
Through through Henderson, I think I think through Henderson, the curvature limits it to around 80. But north and south of it, you know, we're looking at a maximum design speed of about 110.
And so that, yeah, that does, from what I understand of it, creates conflict between freight and passenger.
Well, what we can do, sir, is what is the speed itself, actually freight trains will be able to take advantage of the higher-speed track. Like today, they're limited to 25. Freight trains will be able to operate at a faster speed, which means that their crews and the freight on the on the railroad will actually benefit from using this new service. In fact, CSX may actually have enough of a benefit that they can serve more customers with the same crew than they do today, just because of the improvement in travel time.
Thank you.
Couple of questions that I have. The first question is, whatever happened to the railway yard that was supposed to be built in Rocky Mountain, North Carolina? Where does that stand now?
That's an excellent question. So that is a very successful project that we actually opened to business in October of 2021. We and 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 actually, it's why there's so much more freight over. It's part of the reason why there's so much more freight over on that line and why we're trying to separate, you know, passenger freight traffic. That 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 facility is in operation. It's already receiving receiving loads from truckloads because it that's that's the that's the principle. It's a short haul truck haul to that facility. But it's receiving railloads from the port at Wilmington. It's receiving truckloads from area businesses, and it's connected basically this region of North Carolina to the Midwest and western part of the country.
You had two routes on that drawing that you had to Richmond and to Washington DC. You had one quarter through Vance County. You had another quarter through Rocky Mountain and Runaway Rapids and Halifax County.
Yes, sir.
Am I correct in knowing that the line from Rocky Mountain to Richmond is in place? It is rail there now?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
There is no rail from North Carolina to Richmond?
That's correct.
Now, all the rails have been taken up and nothing is there?
Between North Carolina and Peters, North Carolina and Collier, which is just south of Petersburg. You're correct. Yeah, on this on this map, it's the dashed area. Yes, sir.
So in essence, knowing those assumptions, I would be right in assuming that the first quarter that would be finished would be the one that's through Rocky Mountain.
So the one of the principles here is there is a quarter through Rocky Mountain. That is a high-volume freight route. And one of one of the things that was considered early on when they were doing the route selection was what would and and to the gentleman, the Commissioner's question about, you know, the interference between freight and passenger, adding lots of passenger on that line over and above what it is, would cost would would create a tremendous amount of infrastructure over there, and you'd still have the conflicts. By building this route, you actually create resiliency in the network, and you better separate passenger and freight.
That route through there will be considered probable.
Well, that route. Well, that route already exists as a core freight route. It, it exists, it exists today. That's correct.
Is, is that high speed rail already in place? The rail he's talking about?
No, sir. That is, uh, traditional rail.
Thought it's not high speed.
That's correct.
It's five hours Rocky Mount to Washington right now, I think, something like that. So you'd have to replace that rail for high speed.
Yeah. If you, if you were going to make improvements to that quarter, it's significant changes would have to be made. That's correct.
So what would be the estimate from Henderson to Washington DC?
The, uh,
In terms of time?
Oh, and oh, the travel time from Henderson to Washington DC. Um, well, roughly, uh, three and a half hours or something like that. Uh, maybe less than that.
Dan does that now. No appointment, Dave. I've ridden with him on the car before.
So that's me. Would it stop? It would be stopping in Richmond though. So you're computing the time that it makes those stops?
That's right. It, it, that includes some key stops. Absolutely. You know, and, and, and the, the, the key to the rail system is, you know, um, one of the, one of the benefits of a rail system is it allows you to use your time productively. Um, I-95, if you tried to get north of Richmond to DC is incredibly congested. And so once you, if you are driving and using your time basically to white knuckle it, you know, with, in a car with the steering wheel, um, you know, it does, you can run into significant traffic jams. Um, this provides mobility to a wider, you know, and productivity to folks that want to use, uh, the mode to, you know.
I don't do none of that. I do 301 to avoid 95.
But that's, that's true, sir. Yeah, absolutely, sir.
I was at a mating, rail meeting in Rocky Mount, and so a couple of years back, I guess. And at that point they were talking about a connector line, I guess, coming through Durham, using the Oxford track. And then I guess this is at the A or the T line. I forget which one it was. But then they said that was another rail right of way that went from Henderson to the Rocky Mount area. Does that still exist? I know Senator Burr was, was talking about that and doing some connector with 87 and stuff and additional between 85 and there.
There are pieces and parts of rail quarters, but none of them connect all the way through, you know, from, um, from this region all the way over to, um, for instance, Roanoke Rapids. Um, there is, are historic orders, but they're not contiguous. In other words, there's not a rail length that goes all the way through. Um, there's, there, but there are some branches, um, but, but nothing that's contiguous today.
Would this route open up? I think right now, like some of our local rail customers, um, the freight has to go to the southern part of the state and then come up. Would this eliminate that as far as freight coming from the west and so forth?
That's correct. I mean, once you've got a quarter that's connected back to the north, I mean, right now this, this, the railroad is a stub end, so everything has to move south. But when it's reconnected to the north, the opportunity for freight to flow both in both directions is reestablished.
I just had one question. Um, you know, some trains don't stop anywhere. So would you be running trains that's non-stop as well as those that will be making these stops periodically?
That's, that's correct. So they're going to have some express, express service trains that, you know, try to have as, as, you know, as reduced a travel time as possible. And then there will be, there'll be other trains that, that certainly make, you know, all the stops or some that make some of the stops.
Now, part of the plan that I saw also said that like in the initial phase is you're talking about going to Wake Forest. There may be bus stops along some of the future rail quarter so that you bus to a station in Wake Forest or Young Zola, wherever it happens to be. And then that becomes part of the, as it matures, is that kind of how that works?
Well, that is an excellent point. And that is actually kind of the concept of this mobility hub concept where you can actually build some of these facilities, you know, or, or have them in place so that you can have, um, as the, as the project is developing, connecting services. Um, but certainly the future that we're looking at, uh, Ryan and his division is looking at is how do we better connect, you know, all these different transportation modes and, 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 you know, whether that's buses, whether that's rideshare, whether that's microtransit, all those things, you know, to, to the core of the, of the rail system.
Will these rails be upgraded or removed, replaced?
So part of the project that we're working on will be significant improving of the track structure. Um, it really, all of it, you know, we'll be looking at drainage. We'll be looking at the track structure. We'll be looking at, uh, bridges, all those, all those elements of, of the, of the project will come to play as we, um, increase the utility of the track. So yes.
New rails.
New rails. Yes, sir.
Who picks up the cost of the Gaston trussel?
Gaston trussel. That is certainly part of the project, uh, and, and certainly one that we have our, our, our eye on. Um, one of the things that we've got to do in this phase of design is do some underwater investigation of the pier structures. Uh, you know, look at, look, if, if those can be salvaged and used, reused, that would be a, a great benefit to the project. Some may have to be repaired. Um, but that is, uh, certainly a major element of what we're going to be looking at. We're, we're intending to use the same alignment of the existing bridge over, over, uh, the lake. Um, but we, um, we'll have, we're, we're going to have to make some improvements. We just have to determine through this process what those are.
I have an educational question.
Yes, sir.
In the last four to six weeks, there's just been a derailment every week. What would be the difference from them tracks, them trains from what's coming through here to what they got going on then? What type of study or assessments have y'all actually done? Try to prevent actually what's going on now?
Well, that's an excellent question and a timely one. Um, so that, what I can say is the track structure, the type of facility that we're building here is very advanced. Um, so it will have all of the, all of the safety features that, that you, you would expect, you know, to avoid those types of incidents. One is removing the at-grade crossings, which is the, you know, at-grade railroad crossings is one of the highest, you know, areas of probability of some kind of collision. So when you remove those, uh, when you improve the track structure to meet some of the highest classes of FRA track class, uh, when you put in the signal technology, um, and when you have a predominance of passenger on this line versus freight, you know, most of the freight, most of the heavy freight will, will move, you know, on the, on another line. Um, you've got a, you have a much more robust system here that we're building.
So with this robust system?
Yeah.
Um, seeing if I can say this correctly, the, the bearings, did he say like it's overheating with the mass of the speed? What's the difference in that train and the train that you're talking about just coming through our city?
Right. So the hot, the, the, the wheel bearings on the freight car, you know, that, I think that's what you're speaking of. Um, and then the detectors, you know, that detect whether or not they, they're hot, you know, um, um, certainly that technology will be in place. Uh, and, uh, we'll be looking at frequent locations for those types of, um, those sensors along this route. Um, uh, one of the things that, that is critical and obviously that's something that we're looking at and that, that the industry is going to be looking at is are there additional safety considerations that can be put, you know, in place to, to limit that type of, you know, incident from occurring? Um, we're actively working with the freight railers right now. Um, but what I, what I can say is, you know, certainly, um, for a, a system like this, we'll be building it with, with as much technology as we can to avoid any of those types of incidents occurring on the score.
One thing is you're developing this and talking about 2031. Uh, in the past couple of weeks, we've had a couple of our crossings here repaired.
Right.
But for the most part, all of our crossings are trashed at this point. Yeah. Are we just going to let those go to nothing in the meantime until we build a new track? Or are we going to continue maintenance and try to, we're, we're, we're having quite a few vehicle issues, I guess, from crossing tracks and so forth. What, is that not part of what you guys are doing or is, is that outside of?
Excellent question. So CSX right now is doing some, um, some interim track renewal. That's, that's requiring them to do some work on, on the crossings. Um, that work is going to continue because they do have to continue to maintain the track until such time as we replace it. Uh, when we bring the project to replace it, it will be all brand new and, um, the intention is not to have any of those crossings. So that when folks are driving across the railroad, they're doing it on a bridge, either above or below the track. And they will not have issues with their, you know, bumpiness across the crossing or any of the other, any of the other issues that come, you know, with crossing the track.
Thank you.
Anybody have any further questions? We want to thank you for coming. You've been very informative. You know, we, I think all of us learned a lot, you know? Some of us had questions and I think you have answered a lot of the questions that we had. Um, and I appreciate all the work that has gone into this. And it, by it being posted on our website, it does give our citizens an opportunity basically to see, you know, where you all are going and where you are headed and where you are at this present time. So we do really appreciate you coming this evening and letting us know what your plans are.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speed it up.
Okay. Next we have an appointment from McKinley Perkins from Economic Development with the EDC Annual Report. Good evening, Ms. McKinley.
Good evening. All right. So I try, I will try not to take too much time. Um, some of this is going to be just a little bit of a repeat from some information I've given you guys already. But I talked with Jordan and we did want to give you guys kind of an update on 2022 from an economic development standpoint and just highlight some things that we accomplished for Vance County in the past calendar year. Um, so just as a reminder, some of the goals that I was set to work with, um, one, to retain or assist in creation of 150 new jobs and 10 million in new investment for the county. Uh, and that was to also include the completion and design and construction of a shell building at our Henderson Vance Industrial Park. So we actually, according to our, um, new construction, commercial, um, planning department, we are at 12 million. So we exceeded the goal set at 10 million in investment for Vance County. So that is very exciting. Some of the highlights from last year in investments include Eastern Minerals. They did, uh, half a million dollar storage expansion. Mazelon did over $1 million for their new restaurant that is going on Ruin Creek. That should be opening this year. Uh, Marshall's was almost a million dollar outfit. Alumadoc expansion was almost a million dollars. Our new Petco that actually opened this weekend, which was very exciting, was almost 2 million. And of course, our very exciting shell building project is over $2 million investment in our industrial park phase three. Um, another goal set was the completion of an economic development strategic plan that was aimed at setting priorities and benchmarks for the future of economic development to include prioritizing regionalization. Uh, so to give you guys an update on where we stand with that strategic plan currently, uh, we are partnering with Creative Economic Development. We have completed our first steering committee meeting, uh, for focus group discussions. We completed a community leaders, leaders focus group. We had one-on-one interviews with representatives from Vance Granville Community College, Henderson Vance County Chamber of Commerce, Tourism, um, and other leaders in the community. Uh, we also completed interviews with external allies to include Research Triangle Region Partners, NC Commerce Prosperity Zone and the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina. We also completed one-on-one interviews with county commissioners that did want one of those. Uh, we have had research that includes 10-year economic and demographic trends for the county and the region. Um, and our consultant will be back in town on March 20th to provide us the preliminary findings at the next steering committee. And I will be meeting with her next week prior to this meeting. We also completed, well, it's almost complete. Uh, it ran through February. I do not have the final results. I will get these at the end of March. But we did a digital solutions campaign with WRAL Digital Solutions that consisted of six total stories. We partnered with tourism. So three were economic development focused and three were tourism focused. So this was just some preliminary information they were able to give me for this presentation. Um, and this only includes desktop computers that accessed this campaign. So this doesn't include any mobile devices, which is the primary mode of use now. Um, so they had 29,000 total page views and of that 28 were unique page views. So that means a thousand people went back and viewed a story multiple times. The average time spent per article was three minutes and five seconds. So this is the equivalent of having a three-minute conversation with over 28,000 people about Vance County. So that is very exciting. We completed, um, several regional job fairs for the Kartar workforce area. And the one in Henderson was very successful. We had 27 employers present. We had over a hundred intent attendees. There were over 20 direct hires from that job fair. So that means 20 positions that were empty or vacant got filled right there at the job fair. And we also had over 300 attendees at the Regional Economic Development Summit that was hosted in Roxborough. And this year's, it will be in Warren County at Lakeland. Um, and that is coming up this month as well. So just to recap on the project submissions that we were able to participate in on state level, um, we did receive 67 projects. We submitted on 15. We could not submit on 52 and we did have five site visits. And one of those was brought to us from the Economic Development Partnership, uh, in Raleigh. And just a summary of how those submissions looked, we did have the primary submissions for the Henderson Vance Industrial Park three site. And that is primarily driven because we were seeing an increase in the need for rail and that site does have rail access. We did receive, uh, over a million dollars in grants. And the exciting thing about that is it all was going to the development of our Henderson Vance Industrial Park. Um, and 500 of that was for the shell building and the rest was to finish the roads and the sewer project out there. So just some highlights from 2022, um, the Economic Development Partnership, uh, participated in Leadership Vance. This is a very exciting initiative that we partner with the chamber on. And, um, actually tomorrow is Leadership Vance Economic Development Day. So we will be doing this initiative as well. Visiting a lot of our industrial partners, taking community leaders that are going through the Leadership Vance class, um, and exposing them to the industry that we have here in our community. We also participated in the JAG Institute, which is a version of Leadership Vance through the middle schools. Um, so this is middle schoolers who are, uh, leaders. They have been chosen by their teachers and their peers as, um, leaders in their school. And we did participate with them and get them exposed to industry in the community to help them get excited about the workforce potential impossibility that we have here. We participated in the Bridges of Parkview groundbreaking, and this is going to be an upscale assisted living retirement community. It's scheduled to open in 2023 and this will bring 40 new jobs and a really, really great asset to the community for our aging population. And of course, we did participate in the groundbreaking for the new shell building, um, which again is an over $2 million investment for Vance County. We did get our very own Jersey Mike's this year, which was very, very exciting. I've eaten there multiple times. And we got the new, um, location for NC Works in downtown Henderson. So this is going to act, bring better access to workforce and career training resources for job seekers and employers here in Henderson. And to finish this, I want to encourage everybody to shop local. We did have multiple businesses open up downtown Henderson last year, which is very, very exciting. And the trend is continuing this year. Um, so as you can see, we have multiple boutiques downtown now, um, several options for shopping. So I do encourage you all to shop local. And in saying that, one of our big partners in economic development is the Small Business Center at Vance Granville Community College. And they are here to, um, talk to you guys about the resources that they help work with small businesses on. So does anybody have any questions or comments for me?
Aaron is, what's the Lumina Dock?
Alumadoc, that is, um, Robco, which is right across from the shell building. They're the ones that build the really nice big docks that go on the lakes and waterways.
Refresh my memory on, I think it was your third slide. You say you're partnering with creative somebody. I don't know, but who is that?
Creative Economic Development. That is the vendor that we chose to do our economic development strategic plan.
The one we had interviews with?
Yes. Crystal Morpheus. And you, you participated in the community leader focus group.
Any more questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we'll have Dr. Jerry Edmonds from Vance Granville Community College, who will discuss the resources for small businesses here in Vance County.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Good afternoon. Good evening, I should say. Uh, my name is Jerry. My name is Jerry Edmonds, and I have the pleasure of serving as the Vice President of Workforce and Community Engagement at Vance Bramble Community College. And I have also with me our colleague, Ms. Carolyn Perry. Ms. Perry is the Small Business Center Director at Vance Bramble Community College. She's relatively new in that role, but she is doing an excellent job, and will be going off for some training. One of her first away-from-campus duties is down at the beach, so don't feel too sorry for her because she'll be down there. But just to give you a little overview, a brief overview of the Small Business Center Network, and it is a network. So I think many of you are aware of the fact that the North Carolina Community College system is comprised of 58 community colleges across the state of North Carolina. Each of those community colleges has resident on campus, one small, and some more than one, but at least one small business center that services those communities. A couple of fun facts, our small business centers are actually funded with state dollars. So they are what we call non-categorical budgeting on our community colleges. So both the position that that Ms. Perry occupies, as well as our customized training director positions, are non-cut categorical, which means they're funded by the state. That's a good thing, because we receive the benefits of the Small Business Center and of the Customized Training Department here within our areas, but it actually doesn't drain upon our resources because it is funded by the state. So our small business centers have three primary functions. One is to offer one-on-one counseling. So what that means is that when a would-be entrepreneur or even a small business that's already in existence, like some of those that that were just demonstrated on the slide there by McKinley, those individuals can go in, register as a client, and from then on, they have unlimited access to the Small Business Center direct to Ms. Perry. They can schedule three three sessions a week. They can schedule two a week. They can come in once a month, once every six months. Whatever they wish to do, that's up to them. All of those services are free of charge. All of the services that come out of the Small Business Center are free of charge to the entrepreneurs and to those small businesses. So that's one, one-on-one counseling whereby the Small Business Center Director gives them advice, gives them options, doesn't necessarily tell them exactly what to do to either start a business or to retain a business, but they give them options on how they might go about doing what they wish to do entrepreneurially. The second is seminars. In these seminars, our Small Business Center Directors sometimes instruct the seminars. They have the, if they have the expertise, for example, Ms. Perry's background is in financial literacy. She was one of the lenders in her previous job that did the lending to the small businesses in the area, in another area. So she has the expertise to actually teach those courses. For the courses that she may not have the expertise in, she has the budget to hire those individuals to come in and to teach those seminars. So during the seminars, there are typically 10 to 20 small businesses that we like to have before we run that class. They're typically during the evening session like this from 6:00 PM to 8:00 or 9:00 PM. And the secret sauce to those is that, especially the in-person ones, it is that they put that would-be entrepreneur in direct contact with the lender or whatever that situation is. So they build this network so that, for example, if it's lending, as we all know, one of the major downfalls and one of the barriers to starting a business is finance, right? So we put in the room that small business that would-be entrepreneur, we put them in the same room with the banker. And over that three-hour period, they get to hear firsthand about what the small business idea is, so that when they go to make that request for a loan, they're not an unknown entity. They have already had some touch points with that organization. And then the last part is a resource center. So with, in every small business center on every campus, there has to be a dedicated area whereby small business periodicals, small business books, small business and entrepreneurship videos, et cetera, are resident for individuals to come in and take advantage of those resources as well. So those are the three areas that our small business centers really focus in on. One of the areas that I'll also, it's important to note is that the interactions, especially the one-on-one interactions between Ms. Perry and that client is confidential. Even if, if I ask her as her, one of her supervisors, or if the president says, hey, what did you and X, Y, and Z person speak about? She can't divulge that information. That's proprietary information between that would-be entrepreneurship and the Small Business Center. Now, if that Small Business Center wishes to give her the authority to do a newspaper article or something like that, if you see a newspaper article coming from Vance Bramble Community College pertaining to a small business, we, and what they're about to do, we have secured approval from that business to run that article. So those are a few of the, of the touch points that we do with the Small Business Center. We do have metrics. So I mentioned to you before that this is state-funded. So Ms. Perry actually reports into, ultimately to Dr. Damaris here on this campus, and we hire her, but she also has dotted line to the state Small Business Center Network Director. So there's, so what that means is that each year, there's an annual report that Ms. Perry has to fill out, and in that report, it has things like small business startups. So how many did you start? How many jobs were created by those businesses started? How many of those jobs were retained? How many clients do you have? How many total counseling hours did you do during the course of a year? So it's a very detailed Small Business Annual Review and Report that each of the 58 Small Business Center Directors must submit to the North Carolina Community College System. So I'll stop there and entertain any questions that you may have. But we certainly, I'll just, just add one other thing. McKinley mentioned a few moments ago, there is a lot of partnership between her office and the Small Business Center. We are, we, what we see is that when businesses come in, some of the big box businesses that you see coming into the state, one of the first questions that they have of our folks is what are the amenities that you have in your community? Is there a coffee shop? Is there a brewery? You know, how are your restaurants? Things of that nature. So it's important that we keep the small businesses alive and thriving, many of which McKinley showed you a few moments ago in our communities, because that's good for economic development. So with that, I'll entertain any questions that you may have.
Do you have some type of tracking system that after the student graduate that you are, this to track their success?
We do, but it's short-term. So each year is a part of the annual report that our directors have to submit to the system office. There's a survey, and it's a pretty detailed survey that goes out to all of those, in any of those individuals that have had a touch point with the Small Business Center during the past year. They have the opportunity to, to fill out a survey to tell what their service was with, you know, within that survey, and that's very important because that does determine what the annual budget is for each individual Small Business Center. So those budgets range, and I'll just let you know in case this is a question, from, it's very nominal budget, from like 110,000 up to, you know, some of the larger schools, and this is a lot of area of conversation because there are some inequities between like a Wake Tech and a Vance Bramble Community College. But, but the funding is dependent upon those surveys and, and the feedback that we get from those businesses that, once they, and that's one of the questions, did you start a business because of your interaction with the Vance Bramble Community College Small Businesses?
Are those players at capacity? Do they have a lot of, a lot of students take advantage of those, these business classes? Or do you see it like you need room to grow it?
We need, yes, we, we need, we need room to grow it, that's for sure. But we, we do, we need, we, we certainly, the pandemic played in a negative effect, as you might imagine, on the Small Business Center. But I will brag a little bit and say that we started a lot of innovative online programs. And so as a result, two years ago, the Vance Bramble Community College Small Business Center was recognized as the Small Business Innovative Winner, the Innovative Small Business Center of the Year for the state. So we were very proud of that. But yes, there's, there's room to grow, and most of those clients that we service aren't necessarily students. And so one of the things that we started as well is Entrepreneurship Club, so that we can focus on the students and building those entrepreneurs earlier on. But the majority of the folks that come to our Small Business Center are folks that are looking to start a coffee shop or a brewery, something of that nature.
Do you all market targeted high schools? So you're on a CT business?
I know, that's why we had that conversation about a year or so.
Yeah, so do you market it? Because when I look at the students nowadays, they're not interested in business.
That's right.
It's funny, I'm in this class because they put me here.
That's right.
Not that they're interested in starting a business. So are we marketing? What has been done to market the high school? Get them interested.
That's right.
That there is.
No, and that's one of the reasons that we started, we have been lacking in that area. That's an opportunity for us to start even younger, in middle school, because what happens is oftentimes those students come from your program to Vance Bramble Community College, and they've been exposed to entrepreneurship in the high schools, and then they come to us as the community college, and we really didn't, we don't have those programs other than the Small Business Center. So we have to do a better job of pushing entrepreneurship. Hopefully, you've all seen over the past couple of years, Vance Bramble Community College has had a renewed focus on entrepreneurship. And again, to brag just a little bit, last year, we were recognized by NACI as the Entrepreneurship Community College of the Year nationally for some of the innovative things that we're doing. So are we making giant strides? I feel like we are. There's still a lot more for us to make. You're going to see more advertising and marketing that's specific to small businesses and to encourage them to know.
Along the line of what Carolyn was speaking, my great niece in Michigan, her school, they, within the class, they were able to form little businesses within the class.
That's right.
They, they operated businesses. They had their own little business, and they actually had a business in the school.
Exactly, yeah.
Does the Small Business Center operate by the same definition of small business that USTA does?
That's a great question, and I just had a conversation with one of my colleagues about this today. So one of the, one of the questions that we asked is like, what defines a small business? Because the SBA's definition of small business, if you look from year to year, it even changes for, so, and there's a wide range, right? So it goes from a business that has less, that has like less than $30 million in receipts up to 500 million. So that's a wide range. But, so to answer your question simply, no, there's no, there's no cohesiveness necessarily with the SBA, and that's, that's a distinct organization in and of itself. Our sweet spot typically is businesses that are going to have net receipts of less than a quarter of a million dollars, at least starting out. So our sweet spot is really the mom and pop small businesses that you see lined along Main, the Main Street USA, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
For coming. I think you answered a lot of questions. Again, this will appear on our website, so anyone interested in starting a small business, at least we do know, we do have an avenue whereby they can come and get any kind of help that they need in starting up the business and even maintaining. And thank you, Ms. Perry, for coming. Would you like to say a few words or?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you guys for having me, or not you guys, but thank you all for having us here this evening. I am, of course, the new Small Business Center Director. You know, it's, it's an honor, first of all, for me to be in this role, because I am actually from Franklin County, and I live in Bramble County, and I'm from Warren County, and I did a lot of economic developing in Vance County. So I know these counties well, and I do, I have a background in banking, so I'm going to do my best to marry the two between technical assistance and providing funding for small businesses. I'm going to do my best to bridge that gap and bring that resource, because that's the biggest gap for most small business owners, is finding money for their small business. And the number one question I get is, where's the free money for small businesses? I don't know that I have a good answer for that, but I do have a, a resource, a wide resource of the types of fundings that are available to small businesses, and I'm going to work hard to get those, those resources to small businesses.
Thank you so much. Next, we're going to open the Water District Board.
And Madam Chair, I think, was there one item we wanted to take care of before we got to that?
Right, yes. We have been requested by the Sheriff's Department for an add-on appointment. I believe the sheriff is here along with Mr. Weldon Bullock. So if you would like at this time to address the board, please feel free to do so.
And Madam Chair, while they're coming up, just to give a little bit of context to this, I met with the sheriff this afternoon, so this was kind of sort of late, and Weldon Bullock, who's in the sheriff's office here, is here, but this is in regard to talking about the door replacements at the jail and the urgent need that they have to get started. So I'll let them take it from there.
Before you start, let me close the Water District Board back up, and it's now closed, so you can basically start.
Thank you so much. Good evening. I hope I'm not limited to five minutes, like everybody else wants. Thank you for taking me on short notice. Anybody who knows me, most of you know of me, and at least one of you know me since I've been a child. I've never addressed the board before in my entire career at the sheriff's office. I retired in 2019 as a chief deputy here. I've come back to work part-time, and for the bulk of what I do is I do the administrative portions on the law enforcement side of the sheriff's office. Anybody knows me that knows that I loved my job. I love the people who I was working with, and I love the people who I work for, and that's the citizens of this county. I don't rattle easy. I don't bring a lot of emotion into what I do. I'm proud of who I am. I'm proud of this county. I'm proud of the agency. I know a lot of things have gone by the wayside, but you know, I will continue to plow forward. Getting back to me rattling, not rattling so easy, I I worked in a lot, in every division in the sheriff's department on the law enforcement side, every single one, from a deputy up to a major. And I've had some nights we've worked a lot, and we've had bad things to happen, but I was able to get a good night's sleep. I was able to get back up, go back to work the next day. Friday night was the first night, and I started working the sheriff's office in 1992. Friday night was the first night I didn't get a good night's sleep. Now, everybody knows things have gone on at the jail, and full disclosure, I am not the expert guy on the jail. I, I don't know how to run that jail. I don't pretend to know how to run that jail. But I received a phone call from Brian Johnson, he's the jail administrator, about an incident that happened at the jail. And I don't want to go into a whole lot of details, but in essence, what is, what happened that night was there were three booth operators working. There was a newly promoted sergeant working, and then there was a practically brand-new detention officer working. So as you all know, the booth operators are just civilians that, that work the, the detention offices, other certified offices that work down there. So that particular night, there were two certified officers working at the jail. A fight broke out, and for somehow, and that's something we got to continue to look into, because it is a personal matter we got to deal with too. A fight broke out, and an inmate got knocked unconscious and stayed unconscious for five minutes without any staff members knowing what was going on. Staff member made a round, saw the inmate. The inmate never said anything about the fight. Staff member left out, and the staff member that made the round, it was the newly hired person that made the round. That person that the detention officer left, the same guy who got knocked out, the other gentleman left away from him and was done with it. He and the guy who got knocked out went to, back to the person who knocked him out and antagonized him into a fight. And a second fight broke out, again, totally. Again, totally, no one at the jail knew about the second fight. After the end of the second fight, um, and the cameras show all this. No, I'm sorry, the camera don't show all the, the camera don't show the second fight. At the end of the second fight, the inmate went back down to his dorm and went um, into his room. I'm hoping that, that you all are aware that we can't lock the doors in the, in the dorms. That they're just, they're old, they've been broken, they, they cannot be locked, they can't be secured. And what eventually happened is the, the guards ended up discovering this particular um inmate who had gotten beaten up twice. And we ended up taking him to Duke to get surgery on his eye socket because his eye socket and everything was fractured. I couldn't rest on that and I know other stuff that's happened at the jail. I realize that. I know other things happened, ha- has happened at the jail. Um, things have become very public of what is happening at the jail. But what bothered me about this particular incident is that, number one, the two individuals who were working at the jail can't control the inmates because they can't make them go into the dorm, shut the door and keep them from fighting each other. They can't do it. They can't physically. There's no physical um, way in which the people and the inmates in the jail can be controlled by the doors closing and staying secure. That was one incident. That's one thing that, that bothered me. The second thing that bothered me is that the guy could have laid there and died. And I don't know how long that he would have gone unnoticed. I have no idea how long he would go unnoticed. And that, that bothered me, you know, I have a huge family. Um, Ms. Fines knows that. I got plenty cousins down at the jail. Plenty. And I wouldn't want any one of them to get killed. I wouldn't want any of my coworkers that work down there to get killed, simply because we can't lock the doors. Now, again, not being a jail expert, I know there are certain things going on about the jail that we're trying to um, do sort of long-term projects um, to get completed at the jail. I'm just asking for you all to consider, just under consideration. And before you consider it, what I think needs to happen is the door contractor, I'm just talking about the people who responsible for the door and the door, no, no other work at the jail. Give us a written commitment to say they can put these doors on this jail, the ones in, in the dorm. A written commitment of thirty days, max. Give us the opportunity to move those people out of that jail for thirty days. Have the doors put on and then the rest of the stuff, it comes later. I'm just wanting, what I want to see happen is that we could control the inmates with the limited staff that we have, if we can lock them down. If we can put them in a, in a, in a cell, close the door and the door stay closed until we open it back up. Cause right now, you close the door, they open it right back up. No matter what you do. We cannot control those inmates in this jail with the current capacity that we have in terms of not being able to lock the doors and um, with the limited staff that we have. Staffing is a problem. There's no secret. Staffing is the issue. That particular night, um, personnel is the issue. We have to correct that. I, I realize that. But regardless, if they were on point, regardless of what happened, regardless of, if, if, if the detention officer did what they were supposed to do, even if we had a, a decent amount of staff working, we still can't control the inmates, have zero means to control the inmates. So I'm just asking for your consideration is to think about the possibility of us moving the, I think it's fifty inmates for thirty days just for the doors and the doors on. A straight thirty days for the doors and then that's it. I just want you to get that under consideration.
And, and just to speak to this from a financial standpoint, because that's all that we're involved in. Uh, and, and as you all know, last month we had a conversation and then it was around fifty-five inmates, basically us paying to move fifty-five inmates for sixty days. What they're talking about now is to try to get that done in thirty days. So based off the conversation we had this afternoon, that would be uh, about eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars uh, to move fifty-five inmates at fifty dollars a day out for those thirty days. So I, I believe that's kind of the request that's coming forward more on a financial standpoint. They have to handle all the process as far as moving inmates. But just financial is the only thing that we would really be talking about.
Well, to refresh us on the last, what was, we talked about the doors last month, right? So what, what do we leave from, from the discussion? We was.
So, so last month, the idea was that there were other needs within the dorms that could be done at the same time as the doors and, and the, the desire at that time was let's go out and get overall prices from those other contractors and do it all together. But what they're finding is it could be sixty, ninety or more days before any of that other work could really get started. And, and, and that's, I think, the concern now is that the doors are the main priority that they.
Thought that we talked about it because the doors are there, right? The doors are there.
All before.
All before. So I thought, that's what we talked about, the doors and moving.
I think, don't think we said we, we wanted a plan for
Make sure.
Total plan, but I think it's come crisis now, right?
Okay.
It's a crisis.
I believe so. I, I, I just don't want anybody to get hurt because we don't, we can't close the doors. That's, that's, that's what I'm saying.
How long is, I, I'm really concerned about this as much as you are. But I want to know how long the door has been broke?
Ms. Hess, I started working for Sheriff Greela back in the nineties. We had door problems then. They, they, they were broke, get fixed, broke, get fixed. Now they've gotten beyond the, the current doors that are on there now.
How long have these doors been the way they are right now?
I have no idea. Again, I'm not the jail expert. I just, I, I'm going on what, yeah.
So you said it Karen, so those, those are doors as when you was there still, what we dealing with.
Same doors.
Did I hear you say you had secured commitment from the door vendor or you were going to?
I'm saying before you all act, before you make a decision, let's secure a written commitment from the vendor that they can do this. This is the start date, this is the end date. Let's get that first. Let us, let us get that first in place.
Have we heard, have we had a conversation with?
We, we've had, we've had a conversation and they've said something verbally, but to me, until they put it in writing.
Last time when we talked last month, it's my understanding. We talked about doing some minor repairs while this was going on. And we've asked a couple of times from that and each time the response has been, it's in my head.
Again.
That doesn't help.
Yes. To me, the board shouldn't do anything until we get a recommitment from that, from that contract.
But at the same time, when, when the time comes, then it needs to happen fairly quickly.
Yes, sir.
And, and if the board, again, I'm not suggesting the board one way or the other on this, but if you wanted to proceed forward, you could approve it contingent upon that. And we wouldn't release any funds until that would be the case. Uh, so.
I have a question before we do, do decide. We approve it. They do the tendency, they say we're going to fix it X Y day to X Y day. Once they fix the doors, then we got to come right back. Get them right back out again and say maintenance need to be fixed. Double jeopardy all over again. Once we fix these doors, they come back. Then they gonna come right back and say, we need to fix this.
Now, now, it's my understanding there's a, a.
I'm just trying to get an understanding. Is this where we at?
It's my understanding is that there are three contractors we're trying to, to do, to do the, that was in, trying to do the whole big project. That, that was my understanding.
Would you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, I do. But, but what I'm, but I'm, what I'm trying to say is I just don't want anybody to get killed or hurt because of the door. But I think, and this is going to take a long time to get those three contractors, to get a beer from three bids and then get somebody to get started. That may be three, four, five months out.
What we spoke about last month was while we were there doing some proper stripping and painting and also securing some of the sites where they're hiding shanks and phones. And so it, you know, you can lock all the doors you want to. If the man walks out with a shank, he's still a risk to the population. So if we don't fix those things, you know, while we're doing it, those are small things to do. And that's, that's what, you know, we're not saying close the jail down, a full renovation of the jail. Let's build two new dorms and do all that stuff. We're talking about doing things that are essential for the safety of the population and the, the people that work there.
I agree with you wholeheartedly, Mr. Brown.
Where we at?
I, I agree with you saying. And I, I, I was here at the last meeting and I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Austin. But to get, like Major Brooks said, to get three different contractors to come together and say, and get bids, say we can do all this. It's going to take another five, six months and one of the contracts talking about it takes several years to do what we got to get done. We're talking about, we have a crisis right now in securing the inmates. That young lady walked in there by herself among fifteen inmates. I mean, they could have done anything to her. I just feel a whole lot better if we can lock those doors and deal with the, the best as it comes.
Do you have somewhere for them to go already? Do you have a Facebook?
What I'm doing, I have to listen from other sheriffs and just like uh, candidate manager says, with contingency that this um, the, the people who install them doors say, yes, we can do it in thirty days in writing. But, but what I would like, I would like the board to approve to, I mean, if we get a contract next week, we need to start next week. We don't need to wait thirty more days before we have another candidate commissioners to come back and ask the same questions.
Yes, sir.
The company that's installing these doors is in Georgia, correct?
I believe they are, sir.
So no one has had communication to say when they couldn't install them?
Yes, sir. We've had, they said verbally, but not in writing. They said they can do it in thirty days verbally, but not in writing.
When can they start?
Yeah, that's my question.
Soon as we get, get the contract, say they, give them the okay. Soon as we give them the okay and say, hey, uh, can y'all do this in thirty days? When can you start? They're waiting on us. They were supposed to start this week, working just by weekly on door by door, but they're waiting on us. They're waiting on the funds.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve up to ninety thousand dollars to house inmates off um, site for up to thirty days. As soon as there is a letter uh, from the installation vendor um, stating that they can complete the job in that amount of time.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Carson.
Can you do a question?
Go ahead, Mr. Um.
I want to, I, what I'm concerned about is we're making this motion and moving forward this thing like this minute. Where are you going to put them?
That's what I asked. You said, did you have?
If I can get, we've got a hundred counties in State North Carolina.
But you know, what's what, have you got any of those things?
One, yes, sir. One candidate already agreed to set twenty. I don't have it now, but one candidate has already set the twenty, agreed to sell corn. I don't know. I don't, I don't have the information right here in my. But I'll reach back out, I'll send another emails. Hey, the project is moving forward. When can you set these inmates?
But I would think Curtis, in terms of what they're asking, what they're asking that once you get a contract, then before they can start the work, that you also get a commitment.
I got to get a good commitment.
Construction can start. That's what they want to say.
They already know what I've been asking this at my meetings and they will, yes, sir.
Just get it on paper, Curtis. Okay?
Oh, yes.
Get it on paper. Yes. But the thing I want to ask the most, I had a question also, my question is that you get the contract of thirty days, you move it thirty days, what else can be done within that thirty days of other things that can be done while you got them out of there? So I'm, I'm, what else, what else can you do while you're putting the doors? Can somebody else come in and do something? As Commissioner Brown was talking about, can somebody else come in and do some other kinds of things?
Yes, sir.
During that thirty days?
I can get someone to come in, do the script, the scripting of the.
Can you get contracts for that, Curtis?
We're waiting on that. What you asking me, Commissioner Kelly, we have put that out to, we have three to Bardo, Moser Architect and another local contractor. We have to doing the scripting of the painting and doing the, the casing of the windows like you talk about. Yes.
Question to piggyback off of Commissioner Leo. You've got one dorm that needs one door. You got one dorm that needs two doors. You got one dorm that needs three doors. And you have two doors that needs ten. So that's twenty-six doors, okay?
Yes, sir.
Now, with that being said, how many of these twenty-six doors do not work at all?
Assume the replacement of the doors.
No, no, no. I understand that they need to be replaced. I, I get it. But how many doors do not secure at all? You understand what I'm saying? Yes, sir. So all of them.
Yeah, they.
So they, okay, so all twenty.
They can be manipulated.
Okay, now. You know, I asked that. We give you the money for fifty inmates. What else can you fix with just fifty inmates out to jail and everybody else still in the jail?
Depending on what contracts we can get lined up.
No, 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 no. You get a contract lined up.
Sir.
We got fifty inmates out of the jail, out of two hundred something. How are they going to fix it with these inmates still in these dorms?
I, I, I hear what you're saying. I don't have the answer to your question. My, my, what I'm asking you right now, we have a, a critical crisis at the detention center. They're required to have these doors locked.
Okay. Then my next question, well, my last question, sir. How long would it take you to make phone calls to say, I got fifty inmates and you house them for me for thirty days?
I would send out a generic email to the one hundred sheriffs in North Carolina and they would respond back to me.
One hundred emails. That's every sheriff, all right? Now, how long would it take to get a letter of commitment of when it actually can be done?
We send it today.
We send it today?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Johnson sent that to today.
Now.
It has a verbal, has a verbal commitment for thirty days, but do not have it inviting.
Okay, now, if we can get a in writing commitment of when it can actually start and you can get us which sheriff, which jails, counties is going to house these fifty inmates? Could we call an emergency meeting and then vote to give him the money?
I think we'll let Jordan handle that.
I think we, what we're.
I'm asking a question.
My motion is to do that contingent on the, the letter and the manager being satisfied that everything's ready to go.
Well, I'm cool with it.
Curtis, uh, realistically.
Yes, ma'am.
You're going to have to coordinate.
At the coordinator, yes, ma'am.
You said you had somebody willing to take twenty.
Yes.
But at least thirty-five more that you need to find somebody.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
So are they committing to say I'll take it when you get your um contract, your letter or whatever?
Once I get, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and start, I'm going to send my letter out tomorrow. I'm going to go ahead and send it out tomorrow. And once we get that letter contract, I will get in contact with the candidate manager.
So the one that said he'll take the twenty, he's going to wait on us to um, be able to say, for instance, the um the person who's going to install the doors in Atlanta. If he, you know, he's not sitting in Atlanta waiting on us, he's doing other jobs. So at the point in time when he say, well, I can come, it could be like thirty days. So with that same jail, are they going to wait to say, we still going to take these twenty in?
I don't know, ma'am. I got to reach back. I got to the ones who, who said that I have some say I'll take five, some say I'll take seven. I have multiple jails on to say they would take five to seven. Uh, they're going to be spread out throughout North Carolina. But one, one sheriff did say he would take twenty. Yes.
Can I, can I inject something in this? I had a conversation with people today about the Bramble County Jail. And I understand they're at about forty percent capacity. Have you checked with them?
Yes, sir. He's going to take some, but he's not going to take, he's not going to take all fifty. No, sir. He wouldn't take all fifty, no, sir. Because a, a lot of jails in the same position I am, they may have the bid space, but they don't have the employees. I mean, you take Mecklenburg County, he, he could take up every inmate we have, but he don't have any employees. They closed down one of his jails in Mecklenburg County. Sir? Well, I can't keep him right here. The jails that they had, the jails they had to the capacity, they don't have the employees to.
Can you, can you, is a second to your motion. Can you restate your motion? I, I, or did you add something to it that I didn't hear? I was, I was here.
I was asking, oh, excuse me. I was asking an educational question to try to add to the motion or enhance it.
Was this, was something added to it?
No, uh, we didn't change the motion. Motion was. No, we didn't change the motion. Motion was to authorize up to ninety thousand dollars. I believe the manager said eighty-two thousand is what he projected. I said up to ninety thousand, conditional upon a letter and having placement for the, for the, um, inmates. And upon satisfactory evidence that the county manager could approve this this transaction to to move forward.
Is that what you were asking for?
No, sir. I was, I was asking backwards. I wanted to get the information first. Get us everything we need first, then we make a motion. I don't want to make a motion until we get what we need to give them what we need, so we know exactly where, we know exactly when, and exactly how much we spend.
But ain't, and the, um, motion contingent to getting all of it before it's released, that's what it's saying. It's still based on.
It's the same thing.
Based on those things being.
No, it's the same thing, okay.
If you're gonna make it subject to getting all that information, then you're gonna get it all and then pay it to you.
We're, we're not gonna release any of the funds until all of that is in order. But the only thing I want to see if I could add to it is if we could name a budget amendment number thirty-one, so we can get that approval.
Okay, budget number thirty-one.
Oh, 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 what's a budget made thirty-one?
Each budget member has a number to it.
Now, you think it's gonna be possible? Cause I would hate to see us approve this, approve the ninety thousand, we get them in these places, and then the person doesn't get the work done in ninety days.
Thirty days.
Well, thirty days, and then now we had to come back because our inmates, um, are in jails, and these people are wanting to be paid.
We're gonna ask them, can you do it in thirty days? If they say they can't do it in thirty days, I will let Jordan know.
Well, I mean, they could say they are, but are you gonna do any kind of penalty clause if they don't, or?
I think you, when you do that, you could, you could do it for thirty days, but at the same time, they might run into an obstacle that may give them, you know, five or six more days, and you have to extend it. You, that, that's uncontrollable. You can, you can't.
Those contingencies of the days where we're gonna happen.
Yeah.
I mean, you just gotta deal with it as you get it.
Yeah.
I mean. This, but but you gotta do, you know, you gotta get out there and do what you can. You know.
Okay.
So basically, it's one day per door.
Does anyone else have any questions?
My, my question here. When it comes to this, this door replacement, the ninety thousand dollars we're talking about, that money is specifically for the doors, nothing else.
Unless there are some incidental things that can occur while this is going on, that do not require a contract. And if, if, if he could get somebody to come in and weld up the three or four windows that they're about to beat out while this is going on, then that's, that's, you know, that's okay. If he can get the the mortar in, there are a couple of places where they're hiding phones.
I think what he's asking is, is the ninety thousand for the doors and the inmates?
No, that's just, that's just, the budget is already there for.
I heard eighty-two thousand dollars for the doors. That's what I heard. Eighty-two thousand dollars for the doors is what I heard.
That's, that's.
Motion is for eight thousand dollars more than the eighty-two thousand dollars requested.
I set up.
I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that additional money because contingencies come up.
I set up to.
That may or may not happen. But my question is, the ninety-two thousand is still earmarked for the doors.
It's earmarked.
Nothing else.
It's earmarked for inmates relocation. The doors have already been paid for, and that's, that's part of the project cost that we already have. So this, this money is for inmate relocation.
The money just for, just right, so, so it's not for the doors.
It's not for the doors.
This ninety thousand dollars is for inmate relocation, and that's eighty-two thousand dollars.
Right.
Right? So now we're talking ninety thousand dollars for inmate relocation.
Correct.
Why not eighty-two thousand dollars? I mean, what, what?
I set up to.
What do we need the extra money for?
What they were saying was, I I think, I think what they were saying was that eight thousand might be a cushion, because it might be on. It's over. So.
So we don't have to come back to the board and say, we need three thousand more dollars, or whatever, if it runs over eighty-two thousand.
Did I say that right?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, it's up to.
The whole, the, the bottom line is, the ninety thousand dollars is for inmate relocate. It's not for doors.
It's not for doors.
Inmate, uh, relocation.
That's correct.
And that's what it's for.
That's correct.
Nothing else.
That's correct.
Well, can I ask this question? I'm curious now. We got the doors, you get contracted to do the doors. Who's paying for doing the doors?
That was the process, the contract we've already have.
Oh, so we already have a contract for the door?
Right, yes, okay.
We just need him to come put it in.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Motion has been made, it's been properly seconded, that we, um, amend the budget, um, to allow for inmate relocation in the amount of up to ninety thousand dollars, um, contingent on the sheriff procuring a letter, um, a written letter from the contractor who will be installing the doors, um. It's been properly seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? By unanimous vote, um, it's been approved for the ninety thousand dollars, um, and it is contingent on you getting that written notification, and it is for, uh, initial thirty-day period. And we just, you know, wish you all good luck. We do understand the the emergency situation behind this. We do understand the necessity of it, and we just hope that everything will work out this time around. So we can make sure that everyone is safe, not only the inmates, but the people who work there as well as the community. And hopefully, once this is done, maybe you'll get, you know, more staffing, you know, to assist those who are there. So it could be a safe working environment for everybody there.
Thank you.
Would you hold up for a minute?
I just wanna make a point of clarification.
Okay, go ahead.
That's one clarification.
Gonna say what we need to write.
Only clarification that I wanna make is, we spent, I can't, we spent a tremendous amount of money in the last six months. And I, I'm, I'm, I am really, really concerned about how much money we spent. Now fixing these doors, how much was that?
About three hundred and fifty thousand.
How much?
Three hundred and fifty.
I'll say three hundred and fifty thousand.
And three hundred and fifty thousand dollars fixing these boards. We just spent another night, up to another ninety thousand dollars. We just had the thing we went through about the insurance. And and and, how much? A million dollars right there. What else have we spent money on?
After a million dollars.
It's blowing me away. How much money?
On that machine that they won't use.
Sir?
This jail is getting expensive.
I'm not, well, you know, some of this stuff is, I wanna look at all these prices. We're talking about over a million dollars we spent right here of Vance County taxpayers' money in less than three to four months.
And we got that machine that they spent that he won't use. That's a half a million.
Well, I just, I I am really concerned about where this is headed.
Yeah, I'm with you.
True. I can't believe, I'm with you. I just want to make that comment.
Okay, I believe we are all of the same accord, and we tried to stress that to the sheriff, uh, at our last meeting, the necessity of going ahead and making sure that all of the, um, that he gives us the exact amount that he's gonna need to do what he needs to do. Um, and I think that was one of, we had, we were on the same accord that it would take, that we would approve for this relocation. But now we're at a situation where it came back sooner than we anticipated without all of the information. But I think hopefully this will sort of nip in the bud, you know, the emergency situation that has arisen. And we can.
Dan's saying, though, it keeps getting expensive, and we keep getting the very expensive process.
Can I ask an educational question? If we sound crazy, excuse me, but can we amend his budget, next budget, for what we spending all these millions extra? Cause he ain't gonna need it. If we fixing it now, it's just a hypothetical.
Yes, we can, if we choose to do that, but he's still gotta operate. Well, that's until we figure out a way to get some inmates out of the jail, um.
Well, we'll be nice.
Yeah.
Uh, and now, how the water district board. Didn't say.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, water board, just a a couple of items. You have the monthly operations report. There, there's no, nothing really there specific to report to you, but I do want to mention a couple of items, uh, from the staff standpoint. Uh, phase one B, uh, is out for bid, the next phase of the water system. Uh, we were supposed to get bids this week on, on Thursday, uh, but, uh, had to push that back to the twenty-first of this month. Uh, the reason for that was the, the contractors need more time to get their, uh, supplier and material pricing, and and so USDA has agreed. And that bidding, a bid opening will be on the twenty-first of March. Uh, one other thing, as it relates to phase one B, uh, USDA is the funding agency, and and recently they have told us um, that they're revising some of their provisions related, uh, to the Build America by American Act. What that means is that if the bids come in higher than the amount of money that we have, and and we go back to USDA for additional funding, um, that they are saying right now that the, the Build America by America could could be i- in effect, and we're already subject to all of the American iron and steel for phase one B, and so that already affects the pricing for the, the, the piping and things. But, um, if we come in over budget and we have, and we go back to USDA, there's the potential that some additional provisions could come into play. And so, um, we'll see where, where the bidding comes, um. But, uh, we're waiting on some guidance for USDA. Is there in the middle of that process? Um, so that's phase one B. Um, the other thing, um, the taps that EnviroLink is installing, they're over sixty percent complete, so we're keeping tabs on that. I mentioned last month, they have transitioned, they've done all the short taps, now they're working on the long taps. Um, they're hoping by the end of this month to have all of those done, uh, but we're still trying to push them on that process.
The monthly report said three taps have been installed. Is that correct?
Uh, no, there has been more, um, three meters have been installed. So that is independent of this tap install.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Um, but that's just, uh, some general information, if there's any additional questions.
Does anyone have any questions? We now close the water district board. Next, we have the finance director's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are anticipating closing on the Ruin Creek property within the next month or so. And to keep the funds and like transactions, we would like to create a lot item to accept that income directly into the capital fund. The recommendation is below.
So moved.
Any question? Any discussion? Been properly. Motion has been made and properly seconded that we accept, um, upon closing that the monies received from, um, the sale of the what, uh, the Y MCA property, that the funds go into the capital improvement fund. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? By unanimous vote is for approval.
I have a couple of surplus properties. The IT department has hardware that is damaged and beyond reasonable repair. I would like to surplus and dispose of the following items. The laptops, the desktops, compact desktops, things listed below.
We approve the property presented as surplus and authorize finance director to dispose of said property accordingly as allowed by state statute.
Second.
It's been, any questions or discussion? Been properly moved and seconded that we, um, allow surplus property to be disposed of according to state law. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? But unanimous vote is been approved.
IT also has fifteen desktops that are functional with no hard drive that we would like to donate to the Gang Free Incorporated. There is a resolution attached for approval.
Move to approve the resolution, declaring fifteen desktop surplus and approve conveyance to Gang Free Incorporated.
Second. Been, any discussion? Motion has been made properly seconded, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? By unanimous vote is been approved.
IT also has thirty-four HP desktops with wiped hard drives, ten HP Co Pro Cure, Pro Curve Network POE switches that we would like to donate to Hubzone Technology Initiative, which is a local nonprofit here in Vance County. The resolution is attached, and the recommendation is below.
So moved.
Second.
It's been, um, motion has been made and seconded that we accept the recommendations for disposing of this property to the nonprofit's sole name. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the final surplus is the sheriff's office currently possesses a two thousand three S ten, two thousand three Chevy Silverado, two thousand one Cadillac Seville, and two thousand nine Dodge Charger. All of these vehicles are unable to be sold for various reasons, including engines disabled by rats and squirrels, like keys, missing roofs, water standing in the floor, et cetera, and we are asking to scrap them instead of selling them on cup deals.
Recommend approve the property presented as surplus and authorize the finance director to dispose of said property.
Second. It's been properly. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Discussion, please. Um, while we're working on this, I, could we get an inventory of vehicles that are out there that the sheriff's office has that may not be in use at this time?
Yeah, that's what we are work, that's what we're currently working on right now.
Okay, that'd be great, because that's.
Of the current ones.
We had this issue before where we had squirrels and rats eat new cars. Uh, this was some years ago, and we don't want that to happen again.
Yeah, this is another case of the sheriff not doing his due propablities.
Well, well, these vehicles here have mechanical issues and all the.
This is due to rats and squirrels. I mean, if he gotten right on top of it, he would have been able to put them up for sale. But he let them sit around until rats and all these other folks have destroyed them, so he can't sell them. That's my point.
So, but it was in working condition before?
Um, we don't know that.
I don't know for these, these have, these could have been UC cars, they could have been all different.
But if we could get that inventory and share that, that'd be great.
Can we put an as is sign on it?
All right.
Motion has been made that.
And it's surplus, it is as is, isn't it?
Yes.
That would probably as surplus and dispose of it. Been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
No, any opposition? Motion carries.
Now, I'll just send.
This is for commissioners, information only. The local government standards recommending sending the banking RFP RFQs out for review every five years. We have been with Truist for over six years that I'm aware of. In the near future, I'll be putting out our banking services out for references and bids. Thank you.
Uh, we have the county manager report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you all know, we have the retreat coming up Wednesday. Um, one thing I want to mention, it's a slight, I won't call it a change in time, but I want you to be aware. Uh, the school of government wants to get started right at nine o'clock, and so on the agenda they've put together, they're asking for uh, coffee, breakfast, and like gathering at eight forty-five. So if we can just, uh, what I'm saying is if you can be there a little early so they can get started right at nine o'clock. Uh, it is at the, uh, the library, um, plan to be there, uh, to four o'clock. Uh, depending on how the, how it goes, we could get done sooner. It's all, you know, it's, it's your day. Um, but, uh, we do have the, the training in the morning from the school of government on a high performing board. Uh, then we'll have lunch early afternoon. We'll get into our finance and budget review with Catherine. Uh, and then, uh, later in the afternoon, we'll get into setting goals for the coming year. We'll review where we are this year and and then get into the goals for next year.
Let me ask you a good question. On this, we just passed, we passed, give this, uh, these equipment to Gang Free, do we need to pass the resolution to? It's a separate thing. It's a resolution I'm looking at.
There's two.
Says, is that part of that?
Yeah, that was, that was a part of the motion.
For resolution authorization.
Oh, I didn't hear the word resolution. It was the resolution in that motion.
Do that one first, and then we did the, um, second.
All right.
All right.
Jordan, ask for this retreat.
Yep.
The school of government is gonna be there from nine to what?
Noon.
From nine to noon. But we can do the budget and everything else need to be done in three hours?
Yeah, so, so they'll be there from nine to noon. We'll have lunch from noon.
Four hours.
Twelve forty-five, and then we'll start at twelve forty-five, um, to four. Um, and again, it's up to the board, but just historically, we, we've, that's been plenty, plenty of time. Um, yeah. Okay. But hey, it's all up to you all, so.
Keep moving.
Uh, so that's just for your information. Uh, next item, um, we have, we do have a, a recommendation to approve a resolution. This is in regard to the next set of. This is in regard to the next set of opioid funds that are coming down. You may recall that previously there was a settlement with, with the distributors. This is the wave two, they're being called the wave two settlements, this is with the pharmacies. So Walgreens, C V S, Walmart and some others. This is an additional six hundred million dollars that would come into the state. And an additional of two point seven six million dollars that would come into Vance County. And that would be over the next thirteen years for this latest settlement. At this stage, our national attorneys are recommending that we approve the settlement. The North Carolina Association of County Commissioners and the Department of Justice are recommending that we approve this supplemental agreement for those additional funds. We have to do it by April eighteenth. And so the, the recommendation here is that we would proceed forward and approve the resolution. That would authorize the execution of the opioid settlements and approving the supplemental agreement for additional funds. Related to the settlement of opioid litigation. That's the recommendation.
Just so everybody will know, our portion is going to be less than some of the other counties, some of the bigger counties. There are, as it relates to these funds, they're looking at it on a per capita basis. And because places like Durham and Charlotte, Greensboro, they have a larger population, they have gone back and actually. Negotiate, you know, had it approved where they would get a larger amount, Jonathan, are you?
I mean, I'm not involved in any of that.
Yeah, I mean, this, so the. What we're approving is essentially an amendment to the original memorandum of agreement that we had with all hundred counties. And there's sixteen or seventeen towns, Henderson's one that are, that's included in that. And so that, that involves eighty five percent of these funds coming down to the local governments, which as you all remember, the association county commissioners saw that as a big win. It does come down based off a population, the, the formulas. But it's not any different than the formulas that we used on the first go around.
Like the conversation earlier was that we continue to allow the larger counties to. Take a lead and reformulate the original process. And now we've got another distribution and we're allowing it to follow the same process. We're not going to change it in this amount of time that we have to do this, but it's just something for us to consider. Having some conversations about some of our other rural counties. Monies we're getting relative to the monies they're getting do not support a lot of the need we have for these. To, to fix the problem that was created by these companies.
So we have no recourse, right?
Pretty much no. Was the five 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 group committee involved in the doling out of the pro rations? They came up with it and then the larger counties, the great state of Mecklenburg. And a couple of other large counties refuted it, so they went back, made adjustments to their favor.
Can I ask this question in terms of getting the money, is there any move to create a committee?
So, so the retreat is Wednesday and I will tell you that that is one of the priorities that came up from board members. And so we'll talk about that as potential goal for next year. Yep, but that's a great timely question. But, but at this point, you're looking to, to approve this so we can receive these funds, otherwise we'll, we'll be left out, so.
So move.
Second.
A motion has been made that we accept. Propose supplemental opioid settlement agreement, it's been seconded, all those in favor?
Alright.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Next item I have is again for your information, but want you to know and publicly to be aware of a, a funding request. That has come in from Carts, as you all know, Carts is the car area transportation authority. Just to get a little bit of history on Carts, they were formed as a transportation authority by the five counties in the Carter region back in nineteen eighty three. Since that time, Person County was, was pulled out. And so it's basically Granville, Vance, Warren and Franklin Counties. We each have two board members that we put onto their board, Commissioner Taylor, we've just recently assigned to that board. And Shanaya Gales, who is our senior center director, we just recently appointed to that board. Their total budget for Carts is about three point seven five million dollars total. Most of their funding, eighty percent is federal funding that, that comes down to them. We're responsible for about ten to fifteen percent of that funding, depending on whether it's admin funds. Or capital funding and the state also puts in a portion. Carts just recently has requested an emergency funding request of seventy five thousand dollars from each of the four counties. So that's three hundred thousand total to finish out the current fiscal year. And, and so again, not looking to ask for approval of that tonight as much as to let you know that we're doing a lot of due diligence. The managers from the counties are working together, we've met with Carts, we're meeting with them again and their board and trying to work through this. But we want you to be aware of it. And then additionally, as we get into next fiscal year, it looks like they're going to request an increase of a hundred, around a hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. In their administrative funds and thirty three thousand in their capital. The capital is to allow them to begin replacing buses. They have a, a lot of buses, when I say a lot, over half of their buses that. Are over a hundred and fifty thousand miles and that's kind of the metrics that D O T uses. And so that thirty three thousand dollars, again, it's shared amongst the counties would allow them to replace twelve buses next year. The hundred and fifty four thousand increase that I mentioned. What we're, we're finding thus far in conversations with Carts is the reason for that. Is due to the increased operational cost of their new facility. Which was built, they, they got in that facility in two thousand nineteen. But since two thousand nineteen, then you had COVID, they were able to get some CARES Act funding. And they have been using those funds basically the last three years to fill that gap. And so fortunately, we're not, we, we could have been in a situation where we were paying this three years ago. But now we're kind of at a position where they need to right size their budget. So this is really just to keep you informed. They also obviously have driver shortages and overtime that they're paying out significant of. We did talk with the, the Carts board and they are looking at ways to try to improve efficiency. And that's something we're looking for. You will see this again as one of our budget impacts Wednesday whenever we're talking through the budget. But just wanted to give you a notice on this, not looking for any approval tonight, but would hope to be in position maybe to come back next month or May at the latest. On that seventy five thousand dollars for this fiscal year.
Are you saying that you feel like these, this increase they ask for is feasible?
And if from, from us, I, I think it, I think it may have to be, and I think it can be. You know, they're a, they're a big resource in this region, but we got to ask the right questions and we got to drill down to the right level before we can get there.
Just, just doing the math, Jordan, and I know they have a board, but I would hope that our board representatives would support. They proceed approximately one point five million in CARES Act funding. And then another three hundred thousand, so they've gone through right at one point seven million dollars. Now, if you go back and you say, okay, they're asking three hundred thousand total for, for the next budget year. Then there's six or seven hundred thousand dollars that's missing somewhere. And I think we don't just necessarily need their, their audits to be caught up to date. I think we need probably an investigation by some authorities that can look for potential missing funds. This doesn't make sense for this amount of money to be, be missing. And I think it warrants more investigation, there's been a considerable amount of turnover. In that organization. And, and I think it would behoove if that board could consider doing something other than just a financial audit.
During COVID, nobody can ride a bus, they're going nowhere, so where to move?
The, and the cost that they're projecting, I mean, they're projecting was it two hundred and twenty eight or two hundred and forty eight thousand dollars for insurance on the facility this coming year? Where the previous expense was closer to seven thousand. It's just, these numbers just don't make sense. And so there needs to be, I think, a greater level of scrutiny on the investigation from the investigation level on this. And I, I think we need to be very careful before we go appropriating a whole lot of money. From the county standpoint.
But isn't that group that's working there, trying to get that behind them, that's some, they, the present folks didn't have any control over, right? And they got a new group of people, they're trying to.
They're still interim in the short staff. They're still interim in the short staff and their number, I believe there are a number of opportunities to probably reduce some costs and grade some greater efficiencies. When I sit at Bojangles at six o'clock in the morning, there are three buses up there, tells me something's not scheduled right.
Well, I would suggest that, I would suggest that if you think that there is fraud or corruption or something going on, we should. Have this board or have them come to us and give them an overview of the money. Jordan and all the county managers met with the Carts board and with the manager. And they laid out the financials in excruciating detail. Now I'm hearing that there are some suspicion that some of the money that disappear, that you, we claim, allege is a better word. Has disappeared, maybe due to fraudulent conditions, and we think that we should have them come and give us an excruciating layout of their finances.
Well, I mean, we, we discussed that earlier and it was said that your board is the ruling authority on that. And you guys support those things. And I, I just, you know, I'm not accusing anybody of, of stealing anything, I'm just saying that the math.
Feel like you suspected somebody.
The math does not make sense.
Sounds like an accusation to me, if you.
Well, I know what I said, Colonel.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? I did not make an accusation, I said there are monies that math doesn't make, make it balance, that's what I said.
All I'm suggesting to you Dan is that if there's some suspicion that there's been some misappropriation somewhere. Or some misuse of funds, we should have them come and give us a detailed layout.
I believe there's.
Done that for the county managers, they've done that for the all forty, four county managers. They've done that and the county managers. Seem to be okay with the requests for the additional funds to do what they had to do to stay afloat. And there's ongoing pressure on them to produce an audit for twenty, twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. And they have been kind of told that without the audit, we're not going to accrue any money anyway. So the audit is ongoing for these years. And we're not going to do anything until we see an audit for these years.
So that's the board?
Huh?
That's the Cog Board?
Yeah, the Cog Board. And so we're not going to do anything until we, we're satisfied with an audit. Now, if you want to do something over and above that audit in terms of looking at their money, then that, we need to know that. I mean, that's what it comes down to, the audit is, should reveal if there's any major misappropriation. Not with thing. I'm sorry, say that again? Now.
Well, let me, let me address that.
Because they're past due on an audit for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one.
It, it's two audits, it's, it's the twenty one audit and the twenty two audit. The last information we were given was May possibly for the twenty one audit. And September for the twenty twenty two audit. And then they would roll into the twenty twenty three audit after that.
This six or seven hundred thousand allegedly is misplaced, misfunds or not accounted for. We might be.
No, I. I'm just saying, based on the budget numbers that they're requesting.
Correct.
And the amount of monies that they've received over the past couple of years, that it doesn't balance.
Well, and, and, and where that's coming from, just so I, and, and again, I can't speak for everything at Carts. But what, what we're looking at in here is a limited picture of their budget. And when you look in the packet, they're comparing their fiscal year eighteen budget to their fiscal year twenty three budget. The reason they did that was because in fiscal year eighteen, they were in their old location and they leased space. In fiscal year twenty three, they're in the new budget, so they did a comparison. Just looking at those line items, there is a four hundred and seven thousand dollar a year difference in operational cost. But that is not all of the line items that make up their budget. We've, we've reviewed, the managers have reviewed their complete budget and there's a lot of line items. There's also differences in costs between eighteen and twenty three, so. I don't, I don't know that there should be any suggestion of, that there's any issue there. That, that, I just want to make a point, this is a very limited view and, and not the entire budget. That you're looking at here, which could make up that hole that you're talking about. So.
There's a huge difference in operation costs from their old location to this new location. The maintenance cost on the building, the whole operation of the new location is two or three times what it was before they moved.
There are a number of issues.
They haven't gotten any money to, to maintain that.
There are a number of issues, I mean, policies of no shows, those kind of things, there are a lot of lost revenue opportunities. Again, I'm basing on the, the limited information that I have.
Right.
But, but they're just, there are a whole lot of questions that I don't know would be answered by a standard audit. And, and if, if it's necessary.
The no shows and all that was presented to the county managers when we, when they had to present, presentation for all the county managers. About those issues you're talking about and the fact that they lost a lot of money because of these no shows and people.
I mean, I understand all that, I mean, we have, you're on the board that represents that. I'm a county commissioner who tries to take care of the, the monies of the citizens of Vance County and that's where I'm at.
Stand and appreciate that, and I'm into my, I haven't been but the two board meeting.
I understand, yeah, you just.
I'm just trying to.
You got on it when nobody else would go, thanks.
What's that?
Are all the counties on board?
But when you say on board, we're not there yet and that's why I'm not here making a recommendation for you tonight. But we're, we're working to get there.
So it's, it's how many years worth of audits did they need to?
Two. Yep. And so that is just for your information, but I wanted to make you aware of it, have some discussion. We'll mention it again at the retreat, we're meeting again with Carts later this month. And I would hope to be back by April with the recommendation, if not, it'll slip to May, so. There, there, there seems to be consensus right now that we do not want Carts to fail. And, and we need Carts in our, in, in our area. There's also an idea that I don't know that we're going to have all of the answers before it's time for us to at least do the seventy five thousand. But we would like to have those answers before we really get the larger increase in next year's budget. Yeah, I mean, that, that's, that's the downside, you don't want to just stop the service and they need to be able to pay their employees. So we're, we're still working at, at digging into it.
And you have to remember, Carts is a creation of the counties. The counties created Carts. You know, persons, I dropped that, that's right, there were five counties that created it and now there are four that sustain. Persons is no longer in it.
I think it is interesting to me though, just as a side that, you know, eighty percent of the funds come from the federal government. And we share the local portion with three other counties, so I think this is a great example of a regional initiative. And it does a great thing in our community, now whether it's as efficient as it should be or could be, there's work to be done there.
Well, Carts has to essentially become self sustaining. I mean, that's the bottom line, we cannot continue to sustain them over a long period of time. They're going to have to become self sustaining, about to figure out how. They're going to have to become self-sustaining, about to figure out how to do that.
Excuse me. I asked her, does she handle the cost budget? She said no.
No, there's totally separate organization. Yep. They're not, they're not a county department.
But they turn over this.
I don't believe they currently have a finance director, do they? You don't currently have a finance director, do you?
They do not, and they do not have a CEO either.
All right. All right, the next item on the agenda.
Yep. Last item I have for you, um, is, uh, this is an item for approval. This is our scrap tire disposal contract. Uh, we are required by the state to, to collect and dispose of scrap tires. And, uh, we do that to the tune of a hundred and thirty four thousand dollars a year. We pay for it. Uh, but the state does give us a little over sixty percent back. So they've given us on average eighty four thousand dollars the last couple of years. Um, our contract with Central Carolina Holdings or Liberty Tire is up. Um, so we have a new five-year contract. They're the company that do this for all of eastern North Carolina counties, uh, over sixty that they serve. Um, and so they're really the only company. Uh, there is one change. They're, they're reducing the per tonnage fee. Uh, from a hundred dollars a ton to ninety dollars a ton. That saves us about ten thousand dollars a year. Um, and, but they're adding a new fee, uh, which is per load of five hundred and sixty seven dollars, which adds around fifty to sixty thousand dollars. That's assuming the amount of loads are stay the same. So my, my point in telling you this, we've talked about our solid waste fund the last couple of years. That the costs continue to go up and the households in the county are not significantly increasing. Um, and so when we get to budget, uh, this forty to fifty thousand dollar cost increase, I mean, to. I'm not saying we're going to have a increase yet because we hadn't got to that budget. But that's a two, 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 two dollar and fifty cent increase in that household fee, just equivalent to. Um, but we're required to do this and the state gives us some revenue back. And so, um, the recommendation, we've reviewed this pretty closely. Um, would be that we approve the, the scrap tire recycling, uh, and disposal contract with Central Carolina Holdings. Uh, that's for our scrap tire program, uh, and to authorize myself to execute, uh, the contract. A subject to any final review from the attorney.
Do they have the same contract with other counties, same amounts?
Uh, we did a review of that. It's been probably six months ago. I, I don't know. I can't speak for every single one, but, but this new fee was in all their newer contracts that are coming out. Um, yes. This is a brand new kind of thing for them, so.
This is one that is nobody wants to make.
Emotion has been made that we accept the scrap tire disposal contract. It's been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Eyes have it, so move.
Just one note, that's, that's an area that we need to be lobbying our legislature on to get some more recovery funds. Um, I don't think, I think, Jordan, you said it hasn't changed since it was initiated, um, about years ago. And our costs continue to go up. So that's something if we could get more state reimbursement would be great.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's my report.
Okay, next we have the county attorney's report.
First up for your consideration this evening is the final approval of the sale of the lot on Elsie Street. Now, we had an opening bid of seven hundred and fifty. That amount was upset to fifteen hundred dollars. And where it ended up. And so for your consideration this evening is the final approval of the sale to Fisher of Men. For fifteen hundred dollars for the Elsie Street lot.
And that's the church next door.
That's correct. Yes.
Move for approval resolution authorizing the, the, accepting the bid for the county own real property. At Elsie Lot.
Motion has been made and seconded that we accept the, um, Elsie Street lot bid. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Eyes have it unanimously, so move.
But I'm sure the next topic that I want to discuss with you this evening is the EMS land purchase. Um, as we shared, um, a month or two ago, we ran into some restrictive covenants. Uh, which is essentially from where the current owner sold land to Dollar General. Um, we've been trying now for three months to get somewhere with Dollar General. And we are beginning to make some headway, but we have not gotten to the final process of getting the. Restrictive covenants that would keep us from operating our EMS and fire department there in the manner in which we desire to do so. And so this evening, it is my request that we authorize the chair or the, the county manager. To negotiate and get at least a ninety day extension on our study period in that contract. And what that will allow us to do is to continue to go back and forth with Dollar General. Uh, and try and reach a resolution that is acceptable with these restrictive covenants that we need release or removal of.
So you need a motion to do what?
Yes, sir.
Do what you just said.
Yes, correct. To extend the study period.
I move that we continue, give the county manager the, and our attorney. The authority to continue negotiations with. To get, uh. Restrictive covenants. Make, leave or whatever.
I wanted to make another motion that it go into, okay?
What, uh? So this action would require also the agreement of the sellers, correct?
Which based upon a conversation with the real estate agent, the sellers are definitely willing to do this. With their real, a conversation with the real estate agent, the sellers have no objection to extending the study.
They have a real estate agent representing that?
They do.
I wanted to see it back in. He said, I wanted to see it back in, um, it is because of fact. He's looking at the purchase of a land, but we're not looking at the whole picture that I see that we got another price of what is really going to actually cost us to do this. That's what I wanted to make a motion, put it back into. Committee, let us look at, because we're not seeing the whole picture. We just look at that land, but not the whole purchase. And I, that I came across what is going to actually take us to build this EMS. That's, that's my input. My motion that I wanted to put out there.
Well, that's something that the chair can definitely. Assign or the, 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 the committee can, can request a follow-up on this.
Yeah, I think from our standpoint, we, we just want to be very clear as to where we go from here. Um, you know, we have a. Study period that is expiring or expired. And, and so at this point, we're simply asking, do we extend that or not? Um, that, that's kind of what we're, what we're trying to look at to buy more time, so.
Well, you say it still looks favorable. I mean, you don't know, but it's not.
If, 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 if we, if we had had this meeting on Friday, I would have said, haven't heard a word from them. Since Friday, I've gotten two email responses from their team. Which is the most email responses I've gotten from them in the shortest amount of time. So it kind of goes in spurts. And, and from what they tell us, uh, we're far enough along in the process now to where. They, we have a general approval of the idea and concept. Now we just have to work out some details.
Me personally.
So everybody really will understand, um, what's going on, um, is that for this purchase. In the title search, I believe Jonathan, you found some restrictive covenants.
That's correct.
That's attached to the land. And as long as those restrictive covenants are attached to this particular land, then the purpose for which. We initially as a board agreed for, um, to look into the purchase, uh, during this one hundred and eighty day period.
No, man, we had a.
Six months.
So it was a six month.
Period, um, was to find out the feasibility and, and during his study, he did find these restricted covenants and. With those in place, there's nothing we really could do with the land unless those restrictive covenants are removed. Thus far, um, Johnson has diligently made attempts to. Um, get those, uh, restrictive covenants lifted, but has not, uh, that has not happened at this point in time.
And, and to, to be clear, Madam Chair, I'm not, we are not. We would have no chance of getting all of the restrictive covenants lifted. And some of the restrictive covenants are not objectionable to us. It's, it's restrictions that prohibit sleeping quarters. Which obviously for the EMS and fire department are just prohibitive.
What did you say about the loud noise thing?
Sir?
The loud noises, was that one of?
That's one of them. That's one. We're, we're still.
Washing cars. All those things are in the list. I just, um. I mean, I'm kind of just following, piggybacking on what, what Carolyn's saying. Um, this thing going back to committee, uh, to have some discussion about where we actually want to go. The cost of this thing is, uh, once you develop, and it's kind of like what we're looking at right now, which we just looked at with this carts thing. Uh, you know, we, we went and built this nice seven million dollar facility and nobody did the numbers on what it was going to cost to operate it. And so we've got the same kind of scenario. I know we didn't do it. We didn't, we weren't, the way I was here when it happened, but that. That's. Kind of you got the cart before the horse thing. And, and I think we're looking at a similar situation here. That, uh, that we're looking at, at construction costs and stuff that would be a considerable amount. And it's not necessarily the direction that I think the board might want to go. So it's, to me, it's a question of. Of do we continue to stretch this thing out? Or, or do we?
So, so to that end. Where we are at is we have given notice to the seller of the objectionable conditions pursuant to the contract. That gives them fifteen days to tell us what they are going, are or aren't going to do. If we still want to keep the option open. Based upon the due diligence that we've invested thus far. My recommendation is that we extend this out for at least ninety days. Because we are not extending it out for a single sole purpose. We are going to extend out. Our study period, which is the due diligence period that allows us to cancel and get out of this contract. With no additional expenses being paid to the sellers, just us paying what we have invested in our due diligence thus far.
And that would include any site engineering or anything that we've discussed in some of our meetings.
That can include anything you guys wanted to include. Yes, sir. This, this is, this is a free get out of the jail free card with. We're extending, we're extending what we call the study period by at least three months.
So right now.
The motion, the motion is to extend it ninety days, which is what you're requesting.
That's right.
So we have a motion and a second that says let's do that. Uh, and we had this discussion.
Getting ready to help. I'm asking a question. So we in the discussion period?
Taking no action would be, what would, what would happen taking no action? I'm. Turning down this motion tonight would have what effect? If we don't approve this motion tonight, then we. Then I would need to have a discussion with you on how we respond and would need to go into closed session. Because I, that is, that would be related to a contract matter to discuss what would happen. If the seller comes back within fifteen days from the date of the letter that we gave them notice of this objection. On how to respond, um, to whatever they tell us they are, aren't going to do.
Well, ninety days, what, what does ninety days hurt? That's what I want to know. What is, what is a ninety day extension hurt?
I guess I wanted to see the whole detail, what is going to cost us to build. I think my question.
Well, we'll know that.
Actuality going to cost us to even say, do we want to go forward or just eliminate the process altogether because of the fact that. We keep getting missing. This is the part where I have all, this, this is me. Well, this, ever since I've been on this board. I don't get the whole picture. You get, you're going to pay the ground, we're going to pay the, for the, buying the land. What is it going to actually cause the county to do all of this or, or go another avenue concerning the EMS to make it? Better or to build it in a, or restrict it some kind of way.
I think what I hear in this is whether or not the board supports moving forward with an EMS station.
I'm glad you said that.
That's what I hear in this conversation.
And you're hearing it exactly correct.
The, the price to build the station, we have in our capital improvement plan for around five million. The bigger question is, is that what this board wants to do? Or is that not what this board wants to do?
That's the part the board never sees. That's the part I never see. This is the part I only sees is what we did with this land. I would have never knew that. In a sense. But yes.
I guess, I guess where I'm at is. It doesn't hurt to go ahead and approve this action tonight.
Yes, okay.
And would hope that Madam Chair would take this to a committee to resolve this issue that you're talking about. Is that, would that make sense?
I mean, the motion has been made.
You're, you're okay to do that?
Not on Jonathan's.
No, you can't. You have, you have a motion floor. You have a second. You have to vote or you vote it down.
Or that same thing? Oh, okay, okay.
Seems like. It's like we, we're doing it piecemeal. So it's like we're looking at it in terms of a land purchase. Where people may object to the actual building of the, you know, what is going to cost the actual. Build the EMS when.
And I'm not against.
We got a study out there that's, um, looking at the feasibility of what we're going to do with the jail. But we are talking about a large injection of money for, for, um, from our funding. According to what George said, over five million dollars, you know, and. Basically with what we have left in the budget now, what would that pretty much leave us?
So, so, and we, we will talk about this at the retreat Wednesday, but let me give you a primer. We are recommending that we use five million in cash that we have to build an EMS station. We're also probably going to recommend that we take seven to eight million dollars and put it into the jail. But we need to finance that. Anything we put into the jail needs to be financed. But, but we have the cash in hand to proceed forward with the EMS. That's for the board to decide how you all want to proceed forward.
Okay, Jonathan, um.
We've already voted. We've already voted to fire Van for the EMS. We've already voted.
We voted to sign the contract to, to do due diligence.
I'm sorry, say that again.
We voted for a contract to go through the due diligence process.
Exactly.
And, and, and we've not been through that process yet.
That's where we are now. And that's when he discovered those restrictions.
Exactly, exactly.
Put a whole different spin on.
All he's asking for is more time to do what we said we wanted to do. Not, at least not much more time, three months. He was asking for three more months to do what we said we wanted to do.
Okay, right now, uh, Jonathan, what would be the repercussions if we decided we did not want to purchase the land? In light of those restricted covenants, would we be able to walk away from it? It was understood why we wanted the property in the first place. And we can't use it as now for what we initially said we wanted to use it for.
If the sellers come back and say they will get the four or five objectionable restrictions. Remove for us, I am not sure we have that right to do that. If we get the study period extended, then yes, we will.
We are still in the due, the diligence period right now, correct?
Yes, sir. That expired yesterday.
Yesterday. Okay, so, so what we would need to do is get an extension of that.
That's why I'm saying.
Okay, so the motion has been made, um, that we do an extension. Of, uh, our due diligence period, um, been seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Okay, at this, um, point, I think we need to do a individual vote so that we'll know exactly. The ayes and nays, um. Starting with, um, Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Mr. Austin.
Aye.
Okay, so the, so at this point in time, it's been, um. Four, two hours go ahead and agree for the, the ninety day extension.
Okay.
So that's what, five to one.
Can we discuss?
Ninety day extension for you to continue to try to negotiate on those, um, so. Getting those restrictions lifted. So let me ask you this question, so.
Let me, let me clarify. We're just getting a ninety day extension. That's going to be part of what I'm doing during that ninety day extension. But the ninety day extension is to extend the whole study period, not just our rights of the study period pursuant to getting restrictive covenants.
Correct.
So if you, um.
But if there are some additional things, because we have a, we've gone through and done all of the other due diligence initially that the board told us. So if there are some additional things that need to be done. That's where I'm saying we need to talk about that at some point and get those next steps in order.
We've had some preliminary conversations about that, but we decided to wait until we got this issue resolved to pursue any other.
But I think we need to move that conversation forward and and determine as a board if that's, if, if those are things we really do need and want. But it was gonna cost some additional money too, to do those things.
And and to follow up, the last time I said I felt like I thought we would be able to get this done. I've received preliminary commentary back. That they are not opposed to the idea, and now we're gonna need to start working on tweaking of the exact language. So I feel like it's going to happen, based upon what we've said, even stronger than when we first discussed this thirty, forty-five days ago.
So do you have any idea why? They may not have initially, once you approached them, go ahead, went ahead and run along with the lifting of those restrictions? Do I have any idea?
This is, this is some type of a real estate investment firm that manages these investments. And. The way they operate. Is just laughable at times. Um, I think we reached out initially around the holidays. That may have had some. Um, she tells us that they take the request in the order that they received them, uh, just. A lot of excuses and answers, uh, and really they have no reason or incentive to respond or do this. Because they got the restrictions with the sellers, the redbirds, back when they originally bought the land. So I mean, that's, that, that, that's, that was the time to negotiate those restrictions.
Okay, next is the consent agenda.
Move for pro consent agenda.
Second. And motion has been made that we set the consent agenda, it's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Eyes have it, motion carried.
Move for adjourned.
Meeting closed.